Good evening, welcome to Dana Point City Council Meeting of Tuesday, June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Madam Clerk, will you please provide the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All members of the City Council are present.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there a need for a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our first item this evening is a conference with legal counsel as a result of anticipated litigation due to the significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-two. We have one case to discuss. Next, we have our unlicensed residential recovery facility update, which is pursuant to a conference with legal counsel as a result of both anticipated and existing litigation. So with respect to existing litigation, it's pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-A. We have nine cases. City of Dana Point versus New Method Wellness at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-seven-zero-zero-nine-four-one-six-nine. Next, we have City of Dana Point versus Capital by the Sea at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-six-zero-zero-eight-five-nine-four-two-six. Next, we have City of Dana Point versus Tulsa South Recovery at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-eight-zero-nine-six-six-six-five-three-nine. Next, we have City of Dana Point versus Sovereign Health at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-eight-zero-nine-six-six-five-five-seven. Next, we have City of Dana Point versus Donna's House at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-eight-zero-nine-six-six-six-five-two-seven. Next, City of Dana Point versus Ocean Hills Recovery at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-eight-zero-nine-six-six-six-five-three-two. Next, City of Dana Point versus Silver Tech at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-six-zero-zero-eight-five-nine-four-three-seven. Next, City of Dana Point versus Luminance Healthcare at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-six-zero-zero-eight-nine-zero-four-eight-one. And finally, City of Dana Point versus Sunshine Behavioral Health at all, Orange County Superior Court Case Number three-zero-two-zero-one-seven-zero-zero-nine-zero-four-one-eight-four. With respect to anticipated litigation, we'll be in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-two, addressing one case. Next, we have a conference of labor negotiator, labor negotiator, rather, pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six. The agency is designated representative is the city manager. The group will involve unrepresented and represented employees that'll be all positions within the city. Then finally, we have a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven with respect to the city manager. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We're in recess till six P.M. Meeting of June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen will now reconvene our meeting. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any items to report from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're going to present an update on our efforts in connection with unlicensed residential recovery facilities as part of our closed session announcement this evening. So for the benefit of the audience... See, where do I point it? There we go. There's been a lot of talk about sober living homes in the community. In fact, Mr. Rakakis is here this evening to talk about this issue a little bit further. I wanted to update... (laugh) I wanted to update the community on what the City Council has been doing and the efforts that the city has been engaged in, in connection with this issue. And as soon as my PowerPoint comes back up, I'll continue. So there are... The term sober living homes is a term that kind of gets used a lot, but there really are two different kinds of homes that are involved in what people generally refer to as sober living homes. The traditional sober living home is just a place where people who are going through recovery choose to live together, and it's an unregulated environment. There's no treatment. They're just people who just find that living together in an environment where they all share something in common, this idea of trying to become sober after having gone through an addiction problem, is something that they have in common and they share. There's no license requirements for a home like that. There's no regulations that can apply to a home like that. These are just people who choose to live together, like any group that might just choose to live together. What we're seeing out there and what people typically refer to as sober living homes are something that's become, be come to known as residential recovery facilities. And these are businesses. These are places where people pay, typically insurance is involved, to reimburse for the costs of this. You'll have a group living environment for people who, again, are recovering from alcoholism or some other addiction, and they are state regulated. They're required to be licensed. If any treatment at all is being provided, the law requires that the operator be licensed. And an interesting aspect of that is that this licensing requirement also applies if people are going to a daytime facility where during the course of the day they're receiving treatment, but then they have a residence that they go to in the evening as a component of that program. So they may not be getting treatment at the residence, but if the treatment is part of the overall program, then the residential facility is required to be licensed either individually or as part of the license for the daytime facility. So in terms of the application of our laws to these facilities, as I mentioned already, when we're dealing with the traditional sober living home where it's just a place where people just happen to choose to live together, there's none of... There's no local laws that could apply. When you're dealing with residential recovery facilities, there's some state laws that make it very clear that if it's a licensed facility with six or fewer people, then cities are required to treat them just like any other residents. We have to treat them as if they're your home. We cannot regulate them in any special way. Our local zoning laws do apply, however, if they have more than six residences. And it kind of as a note, when we adopt regulations, one thing that we cannot do is try to specifically be targeting or discriminating against the persons who live there that might be disabled. But we can regulate businesses, like you might regulate a car wash or any other business, saying that it couldn't be in certain kinds of residential zones if there's more than six residents. There's a whole host of state and federal regulations that apply, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about these, but the Fair Housing Act, the American with Disabilities Act, the Fair Employment Housing Act, these are all federal laws that the courts have indicated apply when we're dealing with this particular area of the law. And in particular, the Health and Safety Code Section that's cited up here is the one that says that if they are licensed with six or fewer residents, that we can't do anything. We have to treat them like a normal residence, but if they are six or more residents, then our zoning laws can apply, and we can treat them like a business. In the last couple of months, a really interesting statement came out. It was a joint statement put together by HUD and the Department of Justice. And when it was first circulated, interestingly, it was sort of touted as something that was being put together by the federal government in response to a lot of cities around the country, really, complaining about the impacts that these businesses were having on neighborhoods and concerns that people were having. And so it was looked at as something that would be a benefit to cities to give us some guidance on what we could do. The unfortunate reality is, it was... It really kind of reads like, almost like Exhibit A to a plaintiff's brief, something that might be suing a city for illegally trying to regulate sober living homes. It points out all the things that cities can't do, and it summarizes them and, in essence, embraces them as the official position of the federal government that regulates these things. Included in those activities that are viewed specifically as problematic is that starts out with a statement in the first few pages, really emphasizing that cities have an affirmative duty to promote fair housing laws in the context of sober living, in the context of residential recovery. So really, an admonishment that cities need to be careful not to do anything that might be construed as discriminatory. And it goes on to list a whole host of things that cannot be done, including moratorium on housing opportunities for disabled people, and disabled people are specifically designated to be these recovering... folks that are recovering from addiction. It includes things, for instance, it specifically calls out things like boarding house ordinances. I know there's been a lot of talk in the Orange County area about adopting ordinances that are really kind of geared at regulating boarding house type uses, not really targeted at sober living homes, but the White Paper that was put together specifically calls out boarding house ordinances and says that they're questionable, whether they're illegal or not. Talks about enforcing laws differently. So for instance, if we only bring enforcement actions against sober living homes, but that we're not bringing against other residents, that would be a problem. So begs the question, what can cities do? You know, we cannot discriminate, but what we can do is, we can ensure that licensing requirements are being enforced. We can take action to enforce laws that apply equally to everyone, and we can certainly, when we become aware of unlawful activity, report them to the state regulatory agencies, including our local district attorney. So there's some serious ramifications if we do things that we're not supposed to do, in essence, trying to come up with regulations that are viewed as discriminatory. The City of Newport Beach was the, really, the test case in our local area on this. Long and short of it, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal ruled that the City of Newport Beach was discriminating by intentionally trying to prevent persons that were recovering from addiction to be able to live in these sober living homes. The city's ordinance that was intended on its face to be neutral was ruled by the court to be a pretext, and what was really going on was that the City Council was trying to come up with a way to regulate these businesses out of business in an effort to, in essence, discriminate against the residents there. The city ended paying ten point two million dollars between a judgment that was issued against them and a settlement for attorney's fees, and it really sort of sent a shudder through all of the local cities because we're all getting complaints from residences about this issue, and we feel as though our hands are really tied in terms of what we can do in terms of coming up with regulations. And, you know, regrettably, that the law is written in such a way and interpreted by the courts in such a way, that if it comes to actual regulation, the city's hands really are tied. There've been some other cases in Costa Mesa and Malibu that kind of dealt with some of the other issues, but the Newport Beach case is really the most significant. And the problem we have now is this joint statement that I referenced a moment ago is certainly going to make it that much more difficult for cities who are looking to try and enforce these kinds of laws because the federal government has outlined this whole host of issues that cities can't do, which includes virtually anything that we might think to do. So what is Dana Point doing? And, you know, in short, what we have been doing is looking at this issue and trying to figure out, what can we do that does not come across as discriminatory? That was sort of the question that was posed to us. So the City Council, after we did kind of an initial evaluation of all this, came to the conclusion that there was a lot of residential recovery facilities out there operating that should be licensed and that were not licensed. And so they asked our office to kind of come up with a systematic approach to going after those facilities. So back in around two thousand and sixteen, we started this process, and we've kind of taken an approach of orderly going out and one by one locating businesses that should be licensed, trying to start primarily with ones where we were receiving complaints from the community, and asking them to comply with the law, to get licensed. And if they don't get their proper licensing, then we've initiated litigation against them. So currently, or up to date, I should say, we've had fourteen actions filed as we resolve some, then we bring on new ones. Of the fourteen, ten are, in essence, resolved, although, you know, all the Ts have not necessarily been crossed and Is dotted, but they're essentially resolved. Of those ten, half of them just determined that it wasn't worth it to them to try and comply with the state laws. For whatever reasons, they didn't want to do that. My personal speculation is that it just didn't make economic sense for them to try and operate with only six residents, and so they just shut down. The other half have indicated that they're willing to comply with state law. And so the city views that as a victory in the sense that now we at least have the proper regulatory authorities looking over their shoulder, making sure that they're being run properly, and neighborhoods are not impacted with fourteen people living in a home that's really only designed for, you know, a normal-sized family. So as long as they're six or fewer, under the law, we have to treat them like any other residents. When they're licensed, that all comes into play. We have had some success in litigation on this. One of the cases we took all the way through trial resulted in order that the home shut down, and the court awarded the city fifty-five thousand dollars in attorney's fees, which were in the process of recovering. So the City Council's involved in doing a lot of other things as well. It's continued to participate in state and local regional efforts to address the issue. For instance, the Associated ACCO Group has a task force that Councilmember Lewis, for instance, I know has been very actively involved in. They took a trip to Washington, D.C., for instance, to talk to legislators about what could be done. The city's consistently been following legislative opportunities to try to come up with legislation that would give local government more control in this area. Our police and code enforcement officers have been actively fielding complaints, going out and making sure that if we, you know, if we have violations going on, nuisance-type issues, that we can address those. We've been actively investigating complaints from folks that there are people out operating residential recovery facilities without licenses. So we'll look into that if we get the complaints to figure out if it's going on and then start the process that I mentioned before. If it is occurring, first asking them to voluntarily comply, and if necessary, bringing civil litigation about it. And so I'll just conclude with sort of a what can you do? And there's some information here in terms of numbers that can be called to contact our Sheriff's Department, as well as code enforcement, and the State Licensing Agency, which is the Department of Healthcare Services. So this information will all be available on our website. And just for those who are listening and not watching, the sheriff's number is nine-four-nine-seven-seven-zero-six-zero-one-one. Code enforcement is nine-four-nine-two-four-eight-three-five-five-nine, and DHCS is eight-seven-seven-six-eight-five-eight-three-three-three. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions? Councilman Wyatt? No? No questions? Okay. Thank you for that report. We'll now begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Tomlin.
Please repeat after me. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the invocation. The invocation this evening will be provided by Associate Pastor James Christie of Capo Beach Church.
Contrary to some public opinion, I'm not much of a politician, although I've been known to sway a few people's beliefs from time to time. The World Health Organization has proclaimed tomorrow as World Refugee Day. And so I was just doing a little research, and I ran across this prayer written by a woman who has a PhD in social justice. She teaches at Temple University, and I am going to read it very carefully. I want you to listen to every word, and the poem, the prayer will preach for itself. Please close your eyes and bow your heads. "We are grateful for the summer months ahead and grateful for the summer joys and the laughter of the children in our families, our schools, and our churches. Bless our children during these next months. May they grow in grace through play and picnics and camps and family visits and vacations. We pray too for children in our global community, especially for children being scarred by the violence of conflict, the horror of war, of life on the run, and the violence of child labor. For them, the summer holds no promise nor relief. Bless our children during the months ahead, all our children in Iraq, Afghanistan, Pakistan, the Middle East, and I add Mexico. And in every place where the sounds of guns and bombs continue to be heard and continue to silence the sounds of children's laughter and childhood dreams. Bless our children in every country. Where children labor through long days and never know the peace of economic security of freedom. God have grace, may these children know comfort and healing through your compassion and through our efforts to bring peace and justice to the global village we all call home. In his name we pray. Amen."
Thank you. Please be seated. We now come to the Presentations and Proclamations portion of the agenda tonight. We have a presentation by the Orange County District Attorney, Mr. Tony Rakakis. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Rakakis to approach the podium and give his presentation. Mr. District Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, lady and gentlemen of the City Council, very nice to be here this evening. I always like being in Dana Point. In fact, I spend a lot of time here. I have a boat down here in the harbor, so it's just a great place to be. But... So I want to thank you for inviting me to be here tonight to speak to you about a new task force that we are in the process of assembling at this point. And it's a task force to address the renegade sober living homes. And as you know, some of these homes, of course, are contributing to our homeless issue that we're experiencing here in Orange County. In addition to prosecuting over sixty thousand cases each year, my office also builds task forces to concentrate on eliminating certain types of complex crimes. One example of a very successful task force that we've built from the ground up is the Human Exploitation and Trafficking Unit, also known as HEAT, H-E-A-T. I'm very proud to say that the HEAT unit is nationally recognized leader fighting against modern-day slavery, a thirty-two billion-dollar criminal enterprise. Since the inception of the unit, we've obtained nearly three hundred felony convictions with state prison sentences, eight of those being life sentences. I'm confident to tell you that I believe that our task force that we're assembling to focus on sober living homes is... will be just as successful. As you're well aware, Orange County's an amazing place to live, with miles and miles of beaches, seemingly unlimited sunny days, beautiful homes, amazing shopping opportunities, restaurants, plenty of parks and designated public spaces. It's no wonder people want to be here. Unfortunately, we've been... become known as the Rehab Riviera, a prime location for unscrupulous operators who recruit people with addictions from around the country, lure them to Orange County with free plane tickets and promises of treatment. In many cases, this vulnerable population is being brokered, as if they were a commodity and not individuals who are in dire need of help. Once they arrive, they're used and manipulated, and in many cases, not treated at all, and then turned out onto the street to relapse once their insurance coverage runs out, only to start the treatment process over again. So it becomes cyclical with so many people. Left without resources or any way to get home, these people who come to Orange County looking for help often get curbed or kicked out onto the street. They might be homeless. They become homeless, and they're unintentionally, of course, contributing to another issue that we're experiencing here in Orange County. Sober living homes play a huge role in this cycle of revolving door treatment where the victim is used over and over again for their insurance coverage without actually getting help. There are also ancillary crimes being committed in and out of these homes. Through sober living home investigations and prosecution, which we're calling SLIP, Sober Living Home Investigation and Prosecution, I plan to seek legal remedies to protect to the best that I can you and your neighbors from the problems associated with sober living homes while also pursuing cases of insurance fraud, voter fraud, welfare and food stamp fraud, and more. Some of these homes have become a source of nuisance complaints, sparking noise and parking issues and really affecting the quality of our neighborhoods. We already have two prosecutors working on these issues from both a criminal and a civil perspective. We also have three investigators onboard and a fourth who's working the issue from a healthcare insurance and fraud perspective. We're in the process of partnering with additional investigators and detectives from several local police agencies, but we need your help. We've created a tip line, and we're asking for community members to call seven-one-four-six-four-seven-three-two-two-eight to report concerns regarding sober living homes. We've also added a page to our website that allows those who feel like they've been victimized or otherwise want to report sober living home activity in their neighborhood, their locale, to make a report online. It's very simple to use. Although our task force is just getting started, I'm really excited about the prospects of what we are going to accomplish. I believe we will. The City Attorney's doing some really terrific work, as we've seen, with respect to the legislation efforts, the zoning efforts and things of that nature, that we're going to be concentrating more in the violations of the insurance billing fraud and things of that nature. And we are seeing a lot of it. We've already brought some cases, but we're going to be doing a much broader, more expansive use of complaints. So we're going to be... We're going to be bringing criminal cases, but we might also be bringing civil cases under the unfair business law legislation or laws that we have in our state that allow for that. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you and try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Are there any questions? Councilman Wyatt? No?
And just in terms of getting started, do you have a timeline in mind to get up and running?
We're working now, and we're working... We already have some information, but we're working to gather information. So the tip line, the forum on our website, that information is all going to be taken in and looked at so we can see what's where. You know, what's what, what the addresses are, the locations. We have investigators already out there, already out there working. So... And we've brought some cases. We've brought some criminal cases in, well, a big one in Costa Mesa and a couple of others. But the process has been pretty slow because the nature of a criminal case is that it requires a lot of investigation, a lot of, you know, putting together of the paperwork and gathering evidence and so forth before it can be pursued. And so I'm pushing to go to do something with the... That would be much faster than that, the unfair business practice idea, to be able to bring more cases faster. So as far as a timeline on that, you know, I have people working on it now, and I wish I could say weeks or months or whatever it might be, but it's... We're pushing. We're going as fast as we can. So this is a big problem, and I'm hearing a lot of complaints, and I know you are. And I think it's not just that they have sober living homes, it's that they are, as I've indicated in this statement, they're committing a lot of violations of law. And so that gives us an ability to do something about it. And so that's our effort.
Thank you. Really looking forward to working with you on it.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
Thank you. Questions? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Rakakis, for coming in. It was a great presentation. You're talking about the unfair business practices approach. Going through civil... Is that something you're going to extend that ability down to local jurisdictions like cities, that's when we take a look at some of our sober living homes and we're making sure that they're licensed and following all... Are you going to extend that ability to us to go use that tool as well?
Yes, that's the idea. That's the idea. In fact, maybe we can, you know, get together on that. I was listening to and watching some of the presentation about some violations, licensing violations and things like that. Now, the basis for an unfair business practice allegation is a violation. It could be a criminal violation. It could be a civil. It could be different kinds of violations. So we could put those kinds of violations together and file a case.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Yes, I did attend your task force, what was it, a month ago, when you started that up in Costa Mesa? So that was very interesting. So I was curious, have you been able to shut down any of the operators at this point with your task force? Or where are we in that, or is it, you know...
We have a couple that we've filed criminal cases against.
Okay.
And they've stopped their operation, but we haven't finished the criminal case, so, you know, so we're... Those are pretty large... So, you know, so we're, those are pretty large. We're working on getting restitution of millions of dollars from fraudulent billing that they've done for two insurance companies.
Okay. Are they, like, the bigger homes or, or just single type?
They tended to be the larger ones that are required to be licensed, the larger treatment homes. And so we're finding that there's a connection between these treatment homes and, and the sober living, sober living homes, by the way, is a misnomer.
Yes.
We're just using that to identify who we're talking about, and I think people understand that. But, so we're finding a connection between the, the treatment homes and the, and the other, this other smaller so-called sober living homes around the neighborhood. And, and they're, they're, they're feeding, they're feeding the, the treatment home and vice versa. When we take, when we're talking about patient brokering, they're, they're actually exchanging money and such for, to send patients and, and that sort of thing, so.
Has anybody, have you been able to arrest anybody on any of these yet?
I've taken a lot more than three minutes, I'm sure. If somebody finds, you're saying, okay, that's enough, right?
You can continue, please.
We've, we've made a couple of arrests, but, but that's, that's been some, it's been some time. And like I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not at all satisfied with the, with the criminal traditional process. I think we need to work a lot faster than that. And so that's why, you know, that's what we're doing, this, the task force and, and doing, bringing together some other ideas to, to, to work faster than that because, because the one at a time criminal process, investigation, bring case, that doesn't keep up with the proliferation of the treatment centers and sober living homes, so.
And one last thing, are you working with the insurance company lawyers? I mean, it seems to me that if we're talking about insurance fraud and we stop where the money comes from, we have a good chance of stopping the abuse. So I was just curious, is there, is the task force working with insurance company lawyers?
Yes. We work with, with the insurance companies and their, and their, the Insurance Commission.
Yeah.
And as well as with the, with the insurance companies.
Thank you.
And so they're all, they're all in it. I can't, the, the insurance companies are a little, a little harder to work with than we'd like them to be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wyatt? You have another question?
Oh, no, actually, Councilmember Lewis covered it. I was curious where the insurance companies stood on this overall. I think you think that with insurance fraud, they would stand to be big supporters, but they don't work that way all the time.
Don't want to make too strong a statement, you know, public statement about insurance companies, but you know, they, there is an incentive for them to just pay things off and raise the premiums. Right? So I think that, you know, that makes it a little tough to, to get them really involved in prosecution and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time and educating us on this and the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
On this issue. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation to our Community Development Director, Ms. Ursula Luna Reynosa. I'd like to ask her to join me at the front, if you would. And I'd also like to ask Bev Jorgensen from the Chamber of Commerce if you would join me as well. Appreciate it.
I don't see this on the agenda.
I'll start by saying that this is a sad day for the city of Dana Point, but also a happy day for Ursula because perhaps some of you know, maybe some of you don't know, Ursula is going to be leaving the city to take a job with the city of Huntington Beach as their Director of Community Development, correct? So we are, we are very sad to see her go. We wanted to say goodbye to her. This is her last meeting that she will be attending. You will be continuing to work, however, for a couple more weeks. So we wanted to publicly acknowledge all that she has done for the city. So what, what we're going to do is I want to turn it over to Bev to say a few words, and I'll have a proclamation to give to Ursula on behalf of the city. But, I mean, for every, I, I will say very quickly, for everyone who has had the pleasure of working with Ursula, she has been nothing but professional, diligent, intelligent, has the answers, is responsive, has been a real benefit to this city, and she will be missed. And I can speak on behalf of myself as well as the City Council that we are going to miss you. But before I give you the proclamation, I will first have Bev say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, on behalf of the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Directors, and I see those tears, and I couldn't have said much more than what you said, a true professional that I have found in working with you in the past nine months. And I know I speak on behalf of the board and the staff and all the members of the Dana Point Chamber that you're truly loved, a wonderful professional. We wish you the very best. Congratulations to the city of Huntington Beach. So they got a really good one, and so you will be truly missed. And thank you for the hard work you've done on behalf of the chamber. You've been a go-to person that we could ask questions, dig a little bit deeper, and when I, when your name is spoken, people light up. And so it's been a joy to know you, and thank you for everything you've done for the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll present the proclamation, and, and I, I forgot to say a few things, is that, again, perhaps some of you may know just how dedicated Ursula was to the city, how much work she did. She's a native of Dana Point. So I know, you know, she grew up here, went to high school here, how difficult a decision this was for her. So we are truly going to miss you. I've already said that, but we do mean it from the bottom of our hearts, and I want to give you this proclamation on behalf of the city. Let me read it. Whereas Ursula Luna Reynosa began her service to the city of Dana Point on April 15th, 2013, whereas Ursula's exceptional leadership skills have earned the respect and admiration of her staff and colleagues, and whereas Ursula is a highly regarded professional who has been a positive and productive influence in the city of Dana Point, and whereas Ursula's dedicated interest and devotion to duty has been a model of exemplary and invaluable service to our community, and whereas Ursula has been an important resource, advocate, and friend to the Dana Point community, and now therefore be it resolved, I, Richard Vixorick, Mayor of the city of Dana Point, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Dana Point, formally honor and recognize Ursula Luna Reynosa for the important contributions she has made to our city government and the progress of our community, and wish her success in all of her future endeavors, dated this 19th day of June 2018. Congratulations. I will give you an opportunity to say a few things if you'd like.
I will be quick. And this was a complete surprise to me, and I feel bad now. My husband, for some reason, really wanted to come to this meeting, and I said, I want you to take the kids to soccer. I don't want them missing practice tonight. So he's not here, but my best friend, Amy, I know her as Bevy, but she's been married since, and she and I have been best friends since three years old, and we grew up together in Dana Point. And this was very emotional for me because I do love this community. So it was a difficult decision, so I'm not going to say too much, but I look forward to continuing to raise my family here and to the continued success for Dana Point. Thank you.
Moving on on the agenda, we come to the reading, reading of the ordinance titles. At this time, the city clerk will read the title of the ordinance listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one introduction and first reading of an ordinance, it's item number 15, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, Amending Title Eight: Building and Construction of the Municipal Code to Add Section 8.22.019 Expediting, Permitting, Processing for Residential Rooftop Solar, Photo, Volta, I can't say that word, Voltake Installations, and Two, Chapter 8.33 Expedited Electric Vehicle Charging Station Permitting." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Coming now to the consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council, the public, or staff request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Madam Clerk, do I have any items to be removed by the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be removed by staff?
No, sir.
Are there any items to be removed by the council? No. Okay. Seeing none, I will move the recommended action for the consent calendar, all the items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We now come to the public comments portion of the agenda. There will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 30 minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are, are to be directed to the City Council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The city clerk will distribute any handouts you may have. And when you are called, if you would please state your name and city of residence for the record. I see, Madam Clerk, we have several public comments tonight. Okay. The first three speakers are MT, Penny Maynard, and Dawn Lemley. MT? MT will pass. Okay. Moving on to Penny Maynard.
My name is Penny Maynard, 22-year resident of Dana Point. The past year, going back and forth between the Bay Area for physical therapy. And I wanted to say that I want to thank you for voting for districts. I'll probably be in the third. I've already got my third district pin, hopefully. And Water Quality Subcommittee voting on no new offshore drilling. I appreciate that very much. I don't even know why we have any, but California is a tourism-based state economically. And that, along with a couple of other industries, Silicon Valley and Hollywood, and now pot. You know, we, we need to make sure that we keep our water clean. Plus, as you all know, you cannot, just because there is drilling off the coast, it doesn't mean we're going to have lower cost of gas because it goes on the world market. And I, the city apps, the tourism, and the one for services, I think they're a great addition, and it really connects the people to the, to the city. You can get immediate action, and I want to thank you. Also, I particularly love the Katie Wagner social media. I keep getting all those nice tweets. I mean, they are great. They keep you up to date in all different areas, and I think it was a great addition. So whoever did that, thank you very much. I'm sure it's all of you. Okay, now, the next important thing, I think, is Dana Point Beach. Listening to budget discussions, it's clear that Dana Point will need some additional revenue to maintain its five-star services. I believe it should be adding the word beach, the name beach, to Dana Point, and I think it'd increase TOT from the hotels significantly. As, as an example, Marnik Beach residents and Capo Beach residents, when they stand up here to speak, say with pride, I'm from Capo Beach, I'm from Marnik Beach. We need to say, I'm from Dana Point Beach. So I think that's basically my argument for that. And the post office will, has mailed something to me that said, Penny Maynard, California, 92629, because they don't care about the city, they only scan the zip code. So no one will lose anything if we add beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dawn Lemley.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Lemley. I am from San Clemente, and I am the current president of the Board for Welcome In, and I wanted to update the council on some of the activities that we're doing. There's been a lot of discussion about the homeless situation and how our serving of food in the harbor has potentially affected that. And our group has been serving homeless people or hungry people in South Orange County now for 25 years. There are about three different groups that we serve, that we find in our dinner service every night. There is a group that are the short-term, temporarily unsheltered, people who have lost their job or have, for some reason or another, lost their shelter. There's also the working poor, the people we, that are doing day labor work. And about a third of our guests are the people who are the long-term chronically homeless. By providing a meal for the temporarily homeless, we're able to have, allow them to stretch their resources so that they can get back on their feet. By feeding the working poor, they can stretch their budgets to be able to afford the expensive rents that we see here in South Orange County and keep a roof over their heads. We are not drawing people who are homeless to Dana Point. In fact, the number of people that we serve has declined significantly over the last few years. We used to serve 50 to 70 people every day, and now we are serving between 25 and 45. All of our groups who are volunteers, serve, or who serve, monitor and note that on our website every day. But we're also doing other things in the community, too. I Hope, which is the nonprofit organization that helps place homeless people, gives them services, they come to our dinner service twice a week, and that's a great way for them to be able to connect, and they'll help people get off the streets. We've also placed two individuals who were formerly homeless, with the help of I Hope, into a permanent apartment. We've subsidized their rent until they get on their feet enough to be able to support themselves. We've also worked on the Saturday Engagement Center that we did at San Felipe. We've also worked with FAM in qualifying people under the VisPDAAT program for those who are most endangered for being homeless or are homeless and getting them into permanent housing. And I understand that we are a very vulnerable and obvious group, and we do be, we have become the focus for a lot of frustration. But I'm hoping that you realize that we want to support you and your efforts in living up to Judge Carter's recommendations and requirements to be able to support permanent housing and services for our homeless people. We would like nothing better than to have us show up to provide food, and there's nobody there to eat it because they're all taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are Cassandra Andrea, Michelle S., and Gada Gantus. Cassandra Andrea?
Cassandra Andreas. Thank you, esteemed city leaders. I've been a resident of 30, for 30 years, first in Laguna Niguel and now Dana Point Beach. I, thank you. I think I would venture to say that everyone in this chamber tonight is concerned about crime, and more importantly, about the stabbing that happened last week. We need to look at what the cause is, and I-
We need to look at what the cause is, and I'm actually happy to hear that Welcome In is here. Now, we need, I urge you to find the root of the problem. What's going on down there? What's causing the crime? Okay? It could be the Welcome In people that are coming in. I don't know. That could be one reason. I would urge Welcome In to join forces with FAM and Mercy House. And one question with two Welcome In, why are you not feeding the homeless, the hungry, on your sponsor's site? Why are you bringing it down to our beaches? I have to think about the pastor a few minutes ago that said, "Bless our children." That was his topic of his prayer. Absolutely, and I pray and bless that the children of everyone in here and everyone who visits can come to Dana Point Beach and feel safe. Okay? I happen to volunteer with FAM, and their philosophy is on a positive note. Okay? I think we all need to join forces, but I urge you as city leaders, find the reason why our crime rate is up and why the beaches are not safe for people to come to, residents or visitors. We have lovely hotels, lovely residents, lovely future beaches, but look at all those boutique hotels that are in the plans that you obviously approved of. The world right now knows that Orange County is a hotbed for homelessness. In a few weeks, they will also know that the city of Dana Point is not safe to come to. These hotels down, up and down the coast will be empty if we don't take care of this problem now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle S.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your service. I just wanted to come this evening. I had come a month or two ago, and I had heard since then by watching the city council meeting that Mr. Miller does not support development fees in Dana Point being increased. I understand some others feel the same way. I think that's, you know, just wonderful that, you know, we're not creating more expense. It would be great if development fees stayed in the city. That's why I'm here tonight to ask you guys to really look at the fees that you're paying to the TCA, the development fees. They're being increased automatically. Clearly, that needs to be reviewed, but I'd even suggest going a step further and just saying, you know, Dana Point's not going to pay these fees anymore. We want to keep the money in the city. We want to have less taxes on our businesses that are developing and homeowners and residents wanting to remodel. Let's, you know, keep the money in the cities and be able to enjoy and utilize it there. So that is pretty much what I wanted to come and say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gada Gantous.
Actually, I have a presentation. Do I need a clicker or presentation?
I think we have copies of the presentation.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Gada Gantous, and I'm here to talk about the development fees, as Michelle mentioned. These are fees or taxes that your city, along with other cities in Orange County, pay to the transportation corridor agency, the TCA. I feel it's important for, for you and also for members of the audience to understand these fees because they do impact us as taxpayers. I would like to give a quick background on this, this program for those in the room who may not be familiar with it. Back in the mid-eighties, the state legislature authorized the creation of the TCA, and the joint powers agreement was made with a few Orange County cities and also with the county. The purpose of the TCA was to finance, design, and build toll roads and then go out of business. And that was thirty years ago. How did they fund these toll roads? Several ways, primarily revenue bonds, development impact fees, California Transportation Commission grants, and also state and local transportation funding programs. In other words, taxes and public money. So our taxes and public money. So what are the development impact fees and why should we care? These fees are taxes that are paid to the TCA anytime a new home is built or remodeled. And they're also paid on commercial space that's constructed in the area that benefits from the use of the toll roads. And I will talk a little bit about the areas of benefits in a minute. In nineteen eighty-five, the TCA forecasted that almost fifty percent of the TCA's roads were going to be paid through development impact fees, taxes. For residential property, they're charged per unit basis, and for commercial, they're charged per square foot. So who pays these development impact fees? There are residential, residents and businesses in the cities that are considered member cities. Dana Point is a member city. I believe you have two representatives on the TCA board. So every year, these development fees have been approved to automatically increase. They go up on July one of every year. It's been estimated that over the life of the program, two billion dollars have been collected through these development impact fees. So why should, why should Dana Point care? What does this mean for Dana Point? These, these are taxes that the residents have paid. If these taxes are being paid, they're going, they're going to the TCA, they're going outside of the cities. Imagine what could happen if this money stays here. This money stays in Dana Point and in other OC mem- member cities. For a single-family home, just as an example, the tax, the fee, is four thousand one hundred and twenty-nine per unit. For a multi-home, multifamily home, it's two thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars per unit. For commercial properties, it's five dollars and thirty-nine cents per square foot, and this is for one of the, for San Joaquin Hills.
Thank you for your comments. Our next three speakers are Tony Nelson, Kimberly Williams, and Julie Eros. Tony Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Tony Nelson, Capistrano Beach. I had a prepared statement tonight, but I got breaking news just as I was on my way here that the stabbing that we've all been talking about actually has turned out to be a bit of a hoax, which is shocking information, but thank you Lieutenant Sheehan for getting to the bottom of it. Kind of unbelievable that someone would make that up, but I am relieved that such a thing did not, actually did not happen in Doheny Beach, and I hope it never happens again. Regardless, it seems, oh, the other breaking news as I came in was that there's actually a letter here that Paul Wyatt has written to Welcome In, which obviously Mr. Lemley does not have, formally asking that Welcome In cease their daily feed operations. And within that letter, I was interested to see that, it says that law enforcement observed at the daily feeds over the last several months that sixty-seven percent of the people participating in the feed are known criminals, and that in some cases, people had children coming up and spending time with these known children, known criminals. It's not a real savory thing to be doing at the beach or anywhere, and it's certainly not something that families should be participating in. So I hope that Mr. Lemley and his sponsor will read the letter, and I thank you for, for doing that on our behalf. At the same time, I wanted to talk about a problem that I think is, goes way beyond the feed, and that is that whether the feed happens or not, it's not going to stop crime and homelessness in Dana Point. So I urge you to, I know you've spent a lot of time on the homeless task force plan, but I want to see a plan that has some teeth. I want to see a plan that actually results in people not, people moving from homelessness into homes or into some kind of permanent reunification with families. I don't want it to stop there. I'm hoping that we can continue to pursue this because homelessness is a really big issue in Dana Point. I also want to talk about crime. Last year, our crime, our Part II crime was up twenty-seven percent. That's huge. It's almost a third. And this year, what's more disturbing is that in the first five months, year-to-date, it's up another twenty-seven percent. That means that Lieutenant Sheehan and the deputies are doing a great job, they're catching a lot of bad guys, but where are all these bad guys coming from? Our population is basically the same, actually a little lower than it was a few years ago, even ten years ago. Our population's stable, and our population's actually aging. So there's, aren't a lot of old people out there committing crimes. Somebody's doing this. So I urge you to keep working on homelessness, keep working on the sober living issues, keep working on the people in our town who are not from our town, who are robbing our mailboxes, you know, stealing our packages, causing all kinds of mayhem in the community. We've got burglaries up, thefts up, narcotics violations up. We want you to be leaders and to pursue that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Williams.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kimberly Williams, and I'm from Dana Point. I am the owner of Kenny's Music here in town and also the Art and Culture Commissioner for the city of Dana Point, one of them, I guess I should say. Anyway, I do have a concern about my position. Over the, a couple of years that I've been Arts and Culture Commissioner, I've really enjoyed my position. However, I feel that I could be more beneficial in a position, maybe outside the commission, in more of an advisory-type position, like a ex officio-type position, where I would still feel a part of the commission and yet be on the outside so I would be able to do more beneficial things. I feel kind of hand-strung on a bunch of different issues. First of all, there was an issue with us doing a battle of the bands type of scenario that I'd come up with in La Plaza Park, and going on to having the, the ultimate prize being able to play at the summer concert festival. And because of the costs involved with, you know, doing a backline and the whole setup of everything, you know, that's potentially not going to happen where I've got nothing but equipment, you know? Through Kenny's Music, I could, at a mere fraction of the amount, rent, you know, a system to the city, but because of my position, I can't do so. I can supply musicians to the city that are at a level that, you know, we're not accustomed to, but because of my position, I can't do so. So I just would like to put it out there that it would be a wonderful opportunity, I think, for someone such as myself and anyone in the community that would like to benefit the community with their particular talents, yet are business owners and are not able to fully realize and recognize the kinds of things that we could do for the city because of our status as business owners within the city. So that, and I also would like to thank Pastor Jens Christie for his beautiful prayer today. It was very heartfelt, and it really touched me, so.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Julie Eros.
Good evening. My name is Julie Eros, resident of Capistrano Beach. And I met a man once, a successful lawyer, I'll call him Greg. Greg told me thirty years ago he was a sick, pathetic, homeless addict living on the streets of San Francisco. He explained that through grace, treatment, and hard work, he found his way out of addiction and into self-sustaining, happy and healthy life. I have always been torn when I see a panhandler or somebody who is needy, a homeless person. Should I give him a few bucks, or should, should I give him some food? I asked Greg his opinion. He very quickly and adamantly yelled, "No, never give us food or money." I told him, well, that felt really, that feels uncharitable. After all, aren't we all directed to help and feed the hungry? Greg explained that those who give him money allowed him to buy more heroin, and those who gave him food meant that more of his welfare check could go to drugs. Greg helped me understand that as hard as it is, helping is sometimes just enabling. I've learned that the best way to help is to support long-term solutions, housing, healthcare, and counseling. I want to see the homeless become not homeless. I don't think we do that by providing sustenance so that they can stay on the streets. Please support agencies with a proven track record. Places like FAM and Mercy House need funding for permanent supportive housing. They need volunteers and food donations and lots of cash to help people find something more valuable than today's meal. The chance to make their own meal in their own home. Please, City Council, we need your help. Our community has borne the burden of daily feed and the litter and nuisances and disturbances caused by some of their patrons for years. Ask, ask Welcome In to stop the Band-Aid and the feed, and help us bring the homeless inside. This won't solve the homelessness or the nuisances because of this feed in Dana Point, but maybe it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next two speakers are Keith Johannes, followed by Dana Yarger.
Thank you, Mayor Vissarok and City Council members. My name is Keith Johannes. I'm a longtime Dana Point resident. And speaking on behalf of the Dana Point Historic Society tonight, I want to invite all of you to the Fiesta tomorrow night at Doheny Beach. It's a scholarship fundraiser that we have every year that we award two scholarships, one for a Dana Point, a zip code nine-two-six-two-nine resident, and one for a nine-two-six-two-four resident. And the event will be catered by Jack Saundersen of Lucy's El Patio Cafe, so very fine Mexican food, historic building. There is parking fee, so I suggest saving money and taking the trolley to Doheny Beach, and you can join us there. The tickets are twenty-five dollars for members if you get it tonight, or thirty dollars for non-members. There's a little additional fee tomorrow night. You can come on and join us tomorrow night as you have a chance to and, and join us. We're also having a museum event on the first Saturday of every month now. The Sandy Iverson, our photos chair is holding events, so people could come in between ten, the hours of ten and four on Sa- the first Saturday of every month, review historic photos and see if they would like to purchase some. I'd like to take just the last minute or so to thank Ursula for her work with the Dana Point Historic Society, but a warning, remember where surfing really started. And you're helping, you've helped us cement that in Dana Point with the park that, that we've been working on, and we're looking forward to that happening, too. So thank you very much, Ursula, and we'll miss you. Thank you very much, Council, and hope to see you there tomorrow night.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Dana Yarger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council and city staff. Nice seeing you guys. I appreciate everything you guys do for the city. Thank you very much. I'm here just to give a shout out to the people that worked so hard on the recent Arts Fest. It was a wonderful time, the weather cooperated, total Dana Point weather, the Arts Commission, all the volunteers, and especially your guys' support, really showed that the project continues to grow and that Dana Point has a heart and a mind for creative materials. I also want to remind you that Laguna Beach is known for its arts and that somewhere between estimates of a hundred thousand to a million visitors there during the summer, and many of them get there by driving through Dana Point. And if we could find additional reasons, even like the Arts Fest be weekly, bi-weekly, three times during the summer, monthly, there are many artists that want that kind of exposure. So I don't think there's a problem in finding the, the artists, maybe an issue with the quality of the artists, but capturing some of that traffic and have them leave a little bit of their sales tax money with us would be good. And again, thank you all, thank you Ursula for what you've done for the city. And I'll leave you with one other message. If some of you recall, a few years ago, we had an event that drew two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people, and maybe we should consider that Arts and Culture again sometime. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any further public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
With that, I will close the public comments, and I'm going to bring it back to council reports. Before we go around the horn, I'm going to exercise a little mayor's prerogative and ask Lieutenant Sheehan to give us an update that we heard one of the speakers talk about on the incident, the alleged stabbing incident.
Yes, sir. We did post onto social media a brief statement regarding that incident, which states, "On June sixteenth, a man claimed to have been a victim of a stabbing, contacted a valet at the Doubletree in Dana Point, and said he had been stabbed while walking along the path in Doheny State Beach. Orange County Sheriff's Department assisted in the initial search for a suspect based on the description, and we have continued to assist state parks in that investigation, throughout the investigation." Today, we learned that the incident did not occur as reported. This case will be forwarded to the district attorney's office for filing for a false police report. There is no longer an active investigation, and a law enforcement will not continue to search for a suspect. Though we respect the privacy of all parties involved, we felt it imperative that we share this information to reassure the community. Keeping Dana Point the safe community that both residents and visitors enjoy is our top priority. And if I can just stress that a lot of the information that came out in regards to this case had nothing to do with that came out in regards to this case had nothing to do with Orange County Sheriff's Department information. In fact, quite early on, I was contacted by citizens, and I urged them to please give us time to investigate, because things did not seem as they appeared based on the statement. And each time I did that, I saw more and more postings on social media that created more and more false information, right down to the point that someone alleged that a major resort in our city had experienced an act of violence that never occurred. So I want to stress to the community that when incidents like this happen, and you don't hear something from myself or from the deputies, it's because we're gathering information about a criminal incident, and we are obligated to keep some facts to ourselves. Getting online and sharing information that is minimally incorrect, more importantly, complete fabrication, is detrimental to the community, detrimental to the economy, and detrimental to our relationship with each one of the citizens here. The deputies that work in this city pride themselves on keeping you safe, and we do that every opportunity we get. The increase in crime, the Part II crimes, these are things like embezzlements. These are things like fraud. And if I can just point out that the increase in percentage sometimes is a little misleading. For example, if you look at the Part II crime increases, we're talking about things like a forgery. Last year, year-to-date, we had six forgeries. This year, we had an increase of, to eight. If you look at the percentage there, it looks pretty aggressive just on percentage. If you look at the fact of the matter, that is two increases in embezzlements, which are opportunity-related crimes. There's very little law enforcement can do to prevent that, but the deputies are doing everything they can to enforce it, and enforcement is up. You live in a safe community, and we're going to make sure that continues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so now we will go around the horn for public comments. I guess I'll start over here. Councilman Tomlinson?
I will turn my list of reports to the City Clerk after this meeting.
Very good. Councilmember Wyatt?
I have submitted my list of reports to the City Clerk, and I also would like to follow up on a comment made earlier that I did on behalf of the City of Dana Point and the Homeless Task Force, send a letter to welcome in, again, asking that they work with us and part of, and be a cooperative part of our task force, and that we continue to feel that there are more, there are better ways to serve the community that will ultimately help people move from the beach into homes, and enabling them by providing food on the beach has been, we've been repeatedly reminded by our social workers is a mistake. So, I hope we will be able to work together and change that, and work together cooperatively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I will turn in my list. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am one of the people that sit on TCA, and I want to address an issue that continues to come up, and it's development impact fees. Whether you agree with them or not, let me read where they come from and why we collect them. The TCA's enabling legislation and the county's major thoroughfare and bridge ordinance give the agencies the authority for the DIF program. The provisions of the Joint Powers Agreement provide that each of the member agencies of the TCAs, that when I say TCAs, I'm talking about San Joaquin Hills and the eastern corridors, that's two different agencies, are required to collect DIFs and remit them to the TCA agencies. Once the debt was incurred and financed, the indentures or trust of trust executed in connection with issuance of the bonds, the TCA boards, or the TCA agencies, are legally required to collect DIFs. This is not an issue that this council can take up and say, "We're not going to pay your DIFs anymore." We are legally required to collect them and remit them to TCA. So, whether you agree with it or not, that is not something we're sitting up here saying we need to collect them and we want to. That's something that's in our enabling legislation and an ordinance written by the county, not by TCA itself. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that that's what's happening with those. And I will turn my, I've already turned in my list of meetings. That's, that's pretty rare for me, but I did that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I have already turned in my list of meetings as well. Okay, moving on to the public hearings. This is item number 12, updated user fee schedule. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Kilbrey has a staff report for you tonight.
Mr. Kilbrey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a brief point of history here. This city had conducted a user fee study. This would be planning, building, and engineering-related services that the city provides. We completed that study January of '17, based on fiscal year '15-'16 costs. We shared that study, went through it in detail with the then Financial Review Committee last September. We then presented it to the City Council in January, along with the draft user fee policy. We brought everything back in May, last month, and talked about some potential subsidies on some of the fees where there's a greater public benefit identified, and got input from the council regarding the subsidies, as well as a phasing in of fee increases. Going way back in history, many of our fees have not been changed since 1998. It's been 20 years since those fees were adjusted. So, what we're looking to do here is take steps moving forward to implement the user fee policy adopted by the City Council. And before you tonight is a fee resolution to amend those fees for the first step in that three-year process. And with that, we're open for questions.
Okay, open for questions. Are there any questions from Council for staff? Councilmember Wyatt? No? Yes? Okay. Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Mayor Proton Miller? Okay, then I will open the public hearing, at which point I'll ask, do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk? Thank you. We have one public comment tonight from Juan Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Juan Gonzalez, SoCal guest. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you today. For the purpose of my visit and be able to be in front of this council in regards to your proposed fees, we understand, obviously, in the communication, the staff report regarding the city's not updated their fees since 1998, but we have a particular concerns. I'll share with you. We found out this particular item about a month and a half, in the month of May, a week prior to the meeting in the month of May regarding this proposed fees. I came on board in the month of March into the new Public Affairs position, and working with city staff, trying to get some information regarding the proposed fees. We had some particular concerns. We reached out to Public Works, and we were addressed to a staff member, which in that conversation mentioned wanted to find out what were some of those concerns. In particular, it's some of the fees in the area of the poles, increase into the public utilities area, which I think right now it's somewhere around $259, and it's being increased to over $900. And I can share with you, in terms of what we pay other cities within the general area, Mission Viejo is between $179 and $300, Lake Forest, $294, Laguna Niguel, between $122 and $532. We understand that the city is in a position to be able to increase their fees, but we still have much questions in regards to that. I understand, again, that this item has been brought about since the December of last year, and even in January, but speaking with our utility friends, AT&amp;T, SDG&E, and Cox, I understand they sent letters and emails seeking to see if the city would be willing to move the utilities and get clarity. That's what we're looking for, is clarity in regards to this particular item. I come before you seeking that the council continue this particular item and seek for staff to be able to meet with the utilities. And again, all we're looking is for clarity in terms of some of these causes associated. I know the city's not in a position or can't do, you know, make money off of this. We would just want clarity in terms of where these monies are coming from, in terms of the allocation for some of these fees. So, again, I come before council making that request, and I appreciate the opportunity before you. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any further comments, Madam Clerk?
No more, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Do I have a motion on this item?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the recommended action that the City Council passed. Well, I guess we passed the user fee schedule last time in a three-year phase-in, so I will, I will make that motion that we approve that.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I'll open it up for discussion. Councilmember Lewis, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I think it's pretty much all been said. It's been since about 20 years since the council, or since the city has updated its fees. We are leaving about $2 million on the table. We are told by the expert that we paid somewhere around, what, $60,000 to hire? Forty, sorry. $40,000 to hire and tell us, you know, where our fees were in relation to other cities. We were told that if we raise our fees, that we will be in keeping with the other cities. So, we are not out of line. It costs the city money to provide these services. We are not looking to make money on it, but, you know, the city is in a position where it needs to make sure that it is recouping the money, so that we are not going further into structural deficits. So, I am wholeheartedly in favor of this. The only thing I would have done differently is update them immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Councilmember Tomlinson?
Yes, I like the fact that, you know, what we did is take out some of the items that are necessary home repairs, like water heater replacements, furnace and air conditioning replacements, all the things that are essential for safety and comfort. So, I like that. And then I also like the fact that the owner currently has to occupy the building to qualify for some of these things. So, I thought that was good. I do have some concerns over what the Speaker brought up this evening about utility pools, and maybe I could hear a little more information about that from staff. Do we, I wasn't quite sure, is it utility pools or utility installation for like undergrounding and?
Questions have come up related to a variety of permits, encroachment permits and otherwise. Matt Sinicori has reached out to the utilities and offered to sit down with them either individually through, or through our monthly utility coordination meetings that we hold here at the city. If this item passes tonight, these will not take effect until October 1, so we've offered to sit down with them sooner rather than later, so that if there is anything in there that needs to get resolved before implementation, we've got plenty of time to do that. So, Matt is working on that.
Okay, so those adjustments could be made later on to an amendment, or how would those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Wyatt, you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the Speaker tonight brought up a good issue, and this is one of the reasons why I made the recommendation a couple weeks ago that we implement this over three years, and it was basically for the valuation study that we need to do to make sure that we are not overcharging for this. So, even though they don't, they aren't implemented until October 1, we still, you're not going to get that full impact for three years, and so if something happens in the interim that we find there is something wrong in there, we need to make an adjustment. We can do that. So, you know, again, it came up tonight. I, you know, you heard from a Speaker, I don't like fee increases. I don't think we should be doing that to our residents, and I'm still not going to support this. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll just add very quickly, as the Speaker mentioned, this has been in front of us for six months or so. So, I mean, I think my position on this is pretty clear, so I won't rehash that. But with that, if there's no other comments, I'll call for the vote. We're waiting.
I don't have anything.
Did you touch your screen?
Yeah, it's blank. There we go.
Okay, that passes three to two. Moving on to unfinished business, item 13 is the updated strategic plan and financial policies, capital improvement program, FY19 budget adjustments, and resolution establishing the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2018-19. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. I've got a brief set of slides here for you. Mike, if you can go to slide two for me. So, before you tonight are the following recommendations on your slide. This follows four City Council budget workshops where we covered the areas before you tonight, inclusive of our work with the GFOA on the financial policies. Minus the reserves policy, we'll be bringing that back to you in the fall, following your direction, to look at both the unfunded pension liabilities and the deferred capital projects. So, we do have some follow-up for you on that. The one item that is relatively new information that we wanted to share, Mike, if you could go to the next slide for me, is, as mentioned in our last meeting, that we've got quite a bit of feedback from the council regarding the strategic plan. And as I've discussed with you, I've met now a couple of times with Councilmember Wyatt, getting into much detail around the plan. One of the things that we've come up with through those discussions are some development of some initial draft priority projects that could come out of the plan. So, we wanted to expose those to the council tonight for your information and/or any discussion that you'd want to have. As mentioned in the staff report, we'll bring back the final draft plan to you at your July 17 meeting. These priority projects fall within, within the five major strategic priority goals that the council identified: livable community, world-class place, effective, efficient, and innovative government, fiscally responsible and accountable. Mike, if you'd go to the next slide for me. Preserve and enhance environmental health and sustainability, and fostering economic health and prosperity. So, again, these are for your review and/or discussion and input, and then we'll be working on these through the next month before we bring the final version back to your council in July. So, Mike, last slide. Next steps are, of course, completing the strategic plan update and developing project charters for those priority projects that you decide to incorporate into the strategic plan. Additionally, we'll be publishing a date specific you have in your financial policies and the operating budget policy, a framework for a budget adoption calendar. We'll give you a specific calendar with the actual dates included for the next two-year budget process. We've identified the meetings of each month going forward, but this will be the specific dates that you can put on your calendar. And then again, we've got to finish our work on the reserves policy as the council directed. So, with that, we are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, there are no public comments. So, close public comments. Bring it back to the council. What I'll do is, I'm going to move the recommended action, with one exception, I want to mention this is kind of a blended item. Item F was brought forth by Councilmember Lewis, so what I'd like to do is give her the opportunity to give the, we'll call it staff report, give the report on that, if she would like to. And so, what I'll do is I'll move the, move the recommended action with the exception of F.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'll open up discussion to anyone that would like to comment on any of these items. Go around the horn. Councilman Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wyatt for his hard efforts on the strategic plan. I think his detailed analysis and work has really, really added something to it. So, thank you, Councilmember Wyatt.
Anything?
I have a few things.
Turn your microphone.
I have a few things. Yeah, so, working with Mr. Danny to sort of take what we had and, you know, clean it up a little bit and put things together was, you know, it felt like a productive collaboration to get things. As we started out this process almost exactly a year ago, when we passed the budget, to look at ways we begin to do some of our priority-based budgeting and working through that, pieces of that is, you know, it's been a process. I would say that we're mid-journey at best in getting through that. And so, there's lots of little loose ends that we have to work through over the next 12 months, too, to really, as we lay out the calendar and prepare for the FY 2020 and 2021 budgets, and put the pieces together. But what we were attempting to do in looking through all the things that we might focus on is boil down to those things. on is boil down to those things based on our strategic planning where we really felt that the city and at a priority impact could make a difference. Sort of at the top of our list, as you saw in the priority, was this perception of public safety. So, statistics tell us where we are, but they don't, but our residents don't read the statistics to decide whether they're safe or not. And so, as we look at how we bring that sense of safety back to our community, so that it's a great place to live, visit, and be out. Felt like a project that we should form up and get the right people together and just say, how do we, how do we take data, make sure that we're doing the right things and making sure that beyond doing the right things, that it shows in our community. So, we worked through a number of issues. A second one we brought up, one thing I've learned in a year and a half on the council is our employees know a fair amount about what it takes to do their job, and I would hope so. Now, we look for the opportunity to challenge them to come back to us and tell us what we need to do to allow them to do their job better, more effectively, more efficiently. And we need to make that so that they feel not only empowered to do it, but appreciated and rewarded. So, some of the projects we brought out, I think will really help us be a better city in how we operate and what it, and what it's like to be here. So, I appreciate being able to work on some of those. I have a couple of, one specific concerning detail on section G, I think it is about the budget. I think it's, my book is not in G order, but that I think we, this is a good time to address. And the last, I guess it's two meetings ago, I think, that we went through the structural amendments made to the FY 2018 budget and make sure that if those structural budget items were going to carry into the FY 2019 budget, that we adjusted the budget ahead of time and got them in there. And Mr. Kellebrew and I sort of went through them line item by line item and made, and worked through to make sure we understood those adjustments, and I appreciate that. There was one adjustment that is a discussion about whether it's structural in nature or not is, you know, an open question, which was the adjustment of $360,000 that we made to the city attorney budget. And the reason why I want to just discuss that as we're looking at moving this forward and the budget is that in fiscal year 2016, we, our city attorney actuals were 1.262 million, so a million and a quarter, slightly above. In 2017, they were 2 million. And this year, they are, I'm sorry, yeah, and this year, they amended their 1.229, so a million and a quarter roughly. And the approved budget for them at this moment in time for FY 2019 is 872,500. And then additionally, we've added $100,000 in the FY '19 budget for litigation expenses because we hadn't budgeted that before. So, that sort of delta is at this point about, you know, roughly $260,000. My, the dilemma we always face, because I've, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Munoz too, about how we better stay on top and monitor and manage the expenses so we get a better view of them. And the dilemma comes in that the city attorney report, you know, is hired and essentially reports to the city council. But a significant portion of this work is done by the staff. And the council as a, you know, as a board that can only meet and discuss things in and of itself, can't really effectively on a requirement by a requirement manage them. And we've looked for a variety of ways to do that. My general feeling is that we should have a better understanding and a better pipeline to manage it so we know exactly what we are. And when we, the council, ask for things on the budget that it's put on there, it's laid out and we find some way to do that. And we've suggested ways in the past, and I brainstormed with, you know, our city manager and our city attorney about ways to do that without coming up with any particularly brilliant ideas, unfortunately. But I do feel like if we don't more actively managing it, then we have one or two roads we could take. We could simply recognize that the budget's probably going to increase and deal with it. Or we could look at more actively managing it and see if we could do a better job of deciding when to spend the money and what we're, you know, and where we are on it when we do things. So, as we work through this, there's a couple of things that I think we ought to do, or we could do. And my motion actually here would be, or to ask that, we asked the city manager to take the responsibility of the day-to-day management of the budget. So, we have somebody and staff who then we can work through because we can, we can work through the city manager and the city attorney can, and we can put staff in place to help make sure that somebody is looking at the requests going in and the best use of the money. And when we, when we put a request on there, we know the financial implication as we're doing it, we have a better view. So, I think that, you know, our choice here tonight as we look at this, approving this budget is either to decide that we, it's under budget and we should deal with it, or suggest that. My suggestion would be is we attempt to really find a way to better manage the budget. And I would suggest that asking the city manager to come back with us as a proposal on how they might do that might be a good ask.
Okay, I'll, let's see, I heard a motion in there to have the city manager manage the city budget.
Yeah, I know if we, if the best way to pursue is to make a motion or ask him to come back with us, a proposal of how we might do that, that we could act on. But we should find, maybe we could ask our city manager and/or our city attorney on the right way we could look into seeing if we could put something together that would make sense there.
Okay, so, before I treat that as a motion, let me, let me allow, it's sort of a question, I guess, for staff as to if you can work, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you can work with individual council members or, and I'll allow you to expound on what exactly you're asking the city manager if they don't understand. But I'll, I'll allow you to answer the question if you can.
Well, certainly, we can take the council's direction. If you want a proposal, certainly we can do that. I've not had a chance to talk to the city attorney about this, so we'd like to obviously do that and chat with him about what the implications are and what the issues are.
And from my perspective, I don't see what you're asking for as a significant issue. I work closely with the city manager anyway. As a practical matter, the city manager does, on your behalf, manage our budget. The last budget by design did not include costs for a variety of litigation-type items. And as we engage in each of those items, we, you know, talk to the council about, okay, this is going to cost you money, do you want to do it? And so, the council made the decision to do those things. So, that's one way to manage it, knowing that, you know, there's sort of the base service costs that, you know, more or less is sort of in the budget. And that's when things come up above and beyond that, you have to ask the question, would you like us to do it or not? And, you know, we can kind of guesstimate what the costs are going to be. And that's kind of what we're doing anyway. So, I don't really see what you're asking to be, to be, you know, that big of a deal. And I don't know if we have to spend a lot of the council's time, you know, revisiting this issue. I'd be comfortable just giving the city manager direction to do it and to report back to you and quarterly or something on how that's going.
The reason, I mean, generally, the city manager manages all of our budget as far as the departments, right? Across the board, we sign a contract with police services, for example, with Orange County Sheriff, and the city manager takes, you know, sort of ownership to stay on top of that budget and work with the chief of police and, you know, and discuss the wings and so forth across departments. So, but the city council, but the city attorney, as we look at it, you know, we really don't have that same sort of level interaction and insight into where we are and what we might do differently if it, to make things operate, you know, better. And so, putting it all together under the control of the manager so we have that seem like a, maybe the most straightforward and obvious way to do it, but we haven't ever done that and seem like something that we would be worth, would be worth putting in place.
I think what you're really asking is to formalize something that's kind of happening anyway. So, you know, I think it's fine.
Does that, does that question satisfy you?
Yes.
The answer, I should say?
So, I'm, I will take it, the fact that, I think with that direction, I am okay with not adding money to our budget for the city attorney. And we will look to, as we move through the year, just, you know, try to manage to the budget. And if we realize that we, the council, are asking for things and/or need to do things that we didn't anticipate, then we'll have to deal with them when they arise.
Okay, thank you. So, again, we'll continue going around the horn. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, I have a couple of comments. First, as to Mr. Wyatt's comments on the city attorney, we have the means to manage, we just don't have the will. It just takes three votes. I am, at this point, unwilling to advocate the responsibility of this council. We have two positions, that's it, two positions that we are responsible for, the city manager and the city attorney. If we can't manage two positions, then I'm not sure what we're doing up here. Many months ago, this council passed a policy, 5-0. And that policy was the city attorney was required to give to this council a report no less than quarterly, but more often if we request it, of every active case. And what we asked for is how much was budgeted, how much has been spent, what has been done, what's left to be done, how much is left in the budget, what is the expected outcome and when? These are very basic items that every attorney gives to every, every client. And I know this because I practiced law for over 30 years. So, at this point, after I don't know how many months that we asked for this and that we passed this policy 5-0, we have gotten exactly zero reports, zero. So, yeah, we're not managing the city attorney because we're not doing it. All we have to do is say, where's our report? Here's our policy, where's our report? We don't do that. It only takes three votes to do that, and frankly, we just don't have it. So, I am, I would be unwilling, as I said, to advocate our responsibility for the two positions that we have. I think that's pretty sad. As to the items, F that was taken out, the capital improvement subcommittee, this came about as a result of my discussions with the city manager and his suggestion that it be handled this way. I have an issue if you take F out but leave D in because D says to approve the adoption of the seven-year capital improvement program. And F, which you have taken out, is to have a subcommittee to talk about prioritizing the capital improvement program. My position on this is that millions and millions of dollars are taken out of our general fund, transferred into capital improvements, and spent by the city every year, and that that should be a policy as to how we want to prioritize that, how, and policies are set by the council. That was all supposed to be part of the strategic plan that was to be done by the end of December 2017. And here it is, you know, mid-2018, and we still don't have that. Again, we should have had multiple city council meetings, but we can't, we can't get people to show up and just work through this problem. So, I would say that D and F should be heard together because if you're going to approve the seven-year capital improvement program for seven years, then the subcommittee becomes really something that will be a useless act. What is the point of prioritizing something that you've already approved, the capital improvement budget? This capital improvement budget has basically been, been set by the staff. We, we here at council say, okay, move $2 million over, move another $2 million. There's about $4 million that's still sitting in the general fund that should be moved over to the capital fund at some point. And no direction by this council how to spend that money. So, my position is that if we can't sit down at meetings because we can't get three, three people as a quorum to sit down and do that, then at least let's start it, as the city manager has suggested, with a subcommittee who will sit down and go through where we're spending the money and how to prioritize it, and how does that fit in with our strategic plan? And maybe there are some items that aren't even in that CIP, but the council wants to see done, that should go into it. So, I would, I would move that we take D and F together.
Okay, I have a motion to, I suppose, remove, amended motion to remove D as well as F. I'll hear a second.
I will second that motion for purposes of discussion.
Okay, the maker of the motion is Councilmember Lewis. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I think I've pretty much said.
For discussion, or do you like to have any discussion on?
Yeah, yes, I would. So, I want to sort of tie these together. First of all, I am in support of Councilmember Lewis's suggestion of forming a subcommittee to prioritize the capital improvement budget. I think that is a good idea and, and ties into some of the other long-term things we put on our strategic plan. So, I think that's an excellent idea and I'm in support of it. I, I'm of the opinion, first of all, that we can approve item D if we choose to do that. And it says good until the time that we decide to modify it. And, but my real concern comes back, and I guess I'll ask Mr. Senacore to weigh in, is that item D and E are somewhat related, I think, which is to get the M2 funding and all the other things done that we have to do to spend that money. And I want to make sure that we don't pull the rug out from under men anyway.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, on Matt's behalf, items D and E are, you are correct, they are connected. These are annual documents that we're required to file with the CTA to maintain measure M2 eligibility, and they reflect the current adopted budget. And so, the council isn't essentially making any new policy here with respect to Councilmember Lewis's suggestion. Our thought was that as you anticipate coming into a new two-year budget and developing your capital plan, from the basis of the document that you're submitting to the CTA, because that's your kind of foundational document, you have the ability to be flexible. And ultimately, it's, it's a vote of the council to adopt the capital plan. And so, that will come as a part of the two-year budget. And then next year at this time, we'll resubmit a new a part of the two-year budget, and then next year at this time, we'll resubmit a new plan to OCTA to, again, maintain our annual eligibility. So, it's a, it's more of a M2 process document than it is the council making policy in this case.
Okay, thank you. My, from working through the strategic plan the last couple of weeks, it was clear that we could surface way more, way more projects than we could actually execute. And so, prioritizing them and sort of focusing down was, as part of the challenge. I think that some of those policies, as we put together those projects and work on, will make visible the areas where we really should be looking for our capital improvement plan to focus. So, I don't, I don't find a conflict between approving D and approving F both. I think they actually go hand in hand quite nicely.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment, which would remove D as well as F from the, from the original motion?
Haven't we already removed F?
Well, the original motion was to approve all the letters except for F.
Okay.
So, the amended motion, I suppose, would be to approve all the letters except for D and F.
Okay, got it.
Mayor Proton Miller? So, I guess I'm a little confused. So, we are in the process of just having a discussion about what we're going to approve here and which ones are going to be polled for later discussion? So, we're going to discuss D and F later, after we approve the motion to poll D and F? Is that what we're doing? We're going to go through public comment and everything else and then have our discussion?
No.
So, I'm a little confused of where we are.
We've already had the public comment, we're in the motion stage.
Okay.
So, if, in fact, the motion, the amendment passes, that would mean that the new motion would be to approve everything A, B, C, E, G, and H. If that were to pass, that would leave D and F not passed, I would then ask for a motion if anybody wanted to move either, you know, whatever, people can make whatever motion they want to make, if they want to move them both together, want to move one at a time.
Got it, I got it. I know where I am now. I know where I am now, okay. I do have some comments.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor Proton Miller?
First of all, mine's actually on letter G, and, you, Mr. Denny, we talked about this two weeks ago, or three weeks ago when we met, that we had given you direction to cut $200,000 out of the previous year's budget, and you did that, congratulations, good job, and we asked you to make sure you kept that $200,000 cut. Going forward, I think it's something we should take a look at annually, and maybe we should have you do that again, and see if you can find another $200,000 in the budget for us, and I would like to make that amendment to this budget adjustment, if you think you can do it, if you can accept my challenge.
Challenge accepted.
All right, thanks. So, that's what I had there on, you know, I guess we're going to discuss D and F later if this goes through. I mean, I'm at the point right now where, and I guess I'll just discuss it now, it's fine, and, you know, I looked at F, and I went back and I read this recommendation memo, and it kind of caught me, it's a little strange, I guess, you know, CIP is something that the five of us talk about annually. I'm not sure we need a subcommittee to talk about this, to set our priorities, we do that here. It doesn't matter what's on that list, we set the priorities on which projects we want to have completed every year. We take staff recommendations, because quite frankly, I don't know which street needs to be repaved every year. I don't drive them all in the city of Dana Point. But I guess what kind of caught me even a little bit more off-guard is, is, I guess this is just a recommendation memo, it's not really a policy yet, but, you know, it's, I would like to propose a council, and this is from Ms. Lewis, I would like to propose a council subcommittee consisting of myself and one other council member. Now, we understand that this is something you're interested in, but this gets down to whose priorities are we really pushing? I think that is something that the council should come to an agreement on if we decide to do this, on which two members are there. I think it's a little presumptive to say my recommendation is me, when the council as a whole should be doing this, and it's something we already do, all right? I mean, we look at the, we look at the capital program every single year, I'm not sure we need another subcommittee for this, I just, I'm not seeing the value in it at this point. I look at them all every year, and, yeah, there are some times, there are projects we look at and we tell staff, you know, that's a priority for us this year, you've got to figure out a way to fund it. If that means something gets pushed back a year, you know, they take a look at that. So, you know, I'm not sure that I'm going to support the motion to pull them both. I think, you know, as Mr. Denny explained, the seven-year capital improvement program is really more of a measure M issue to get our place for OCTA funding, and it comes back to us annually anyway. I'm just, I'm not sure I'm seeing the value in it at this point, I could be wrong, and, you know, I could be swayed if the argument's strong enough, so.
Okay, all right, speaking, we're still on the amendment, whether we're going to pull D as well as F. I'll just say four, especially to what I think would speed things up. I mean, I'll just tell you, I plan on voting for D as well as A, B, C, E, G, and H. I'm not sure that I'm going to vote for F. One of the reasons why I wanted to separate it out and give Councilmember Lewis an opportunity to present a report and, and let me know why this is necessary. So, to me, as far as the amendment goes, pulling them both, I'm going to end up voting for D anyway, but right now, I don't know if I'm going to vote for F. So, trying to stay on, on topic to also pull D, I'm going to vote against that amendment. And, you know, if, if it passes, we'll discuss it together and whatever, but that's, that's where I'm standing. So, with that, let's call for the vote on the amendment, whether we're going to pull D as well as F. So, I'll call for the vote on that. A no means the amendment fails, and D will remain a part of the original motion. Okay, the motion fails four to one. So, that brings us back now to the original motion to approve items A through H with the exception of F. So, has everyone had their, their chance to speak on this? Okay.
I have a question about G. Approved fiscal...
Councilmember Lewis?
Approved fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget adjustments, thirteen point six. So, that's this six here? It's in what?
It's in tab number five.
Okay, that explains why thirteen point six wasn't working for me. Okay, so it's apparently in tab five. Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that your question? Where is it?
Yep.
Okay, all right, in that case, the motion is to approve items A through H with the exception of F. I will call for the vote on that.
Before you finish voting, Mr. Denny and I were talking, we're assuming that the direction to take on Mr. Miller's challenge on the $200,000 is sort of assumed in the vote that you're taking now, unless people feel otherwise, that's what staff's assumption is.
Does anyone have any objections to that?
If, if I could, just for the record, in action document E, the last page actually, page forty-one, we would be adding a negative $200,000 to the organizational review savings target, and that's account number, general fund zero one, department ninety-nine, and...
Hang on a second, Mr. Kilbrow, I'm not there, can you wait till I get there?
Okay.
What, what page are you on?
Page forty-one.
I mean, I re-tabulated mine, which...
Action document E, and it's page forty-one of the...
You're going to have to give me a second. I reordered my pages to put them in the right order. So, now, that was a mistake on my part, obviously.
Forty-one.
Page forty-sixty-five, there's forty-two, there's forty-one, okay, page forty-one, I'm there.
Okay, the second line on that page, oh-one ninety-nine, ten, zero-zero-zero-zero, eleven ninety-nine, organizational review savings target, the proposed adjustment will be, we'll be reducing that by 200,000.
Do you see that? Okay.
It's currently a dash under FY nineteen.
So, what, okay. I see it, FY nineteen proposed where the dash was. Okay, 200,000. Okay, with that, that adjustment, I will call for the vote. Okay, and that passes four to one. All right, now, that brings us to item F, and as this was Councilmember Lewis's item, I wanted to give her an opportunity to speak to it and make any motion she cares to make. Councilmember Lewis?
Okay, I think I've already spoken to it, that we spend millions of dollars, that I'd like to see us prioritize, I'd like to see that priority go hand in hand with our strategic plan, which we don't have yet. So, I would like to see a subcommittee work on that and work hand in hand with the strategic plan. I thought it was very interesting that Mr. Miller found that asking to be on the committee was presumptuous, given that he started the parking committee and put himself on that. Even though I asked to be on that and was not, so, I take quite exception to that mischaracterization. Yes, I am interested in this, and I, I have spoken, as I said, with Mr. Denny, and I have, this is a subcommittee I'd like to see, and I, I would like to be on the subcommittee. So, I've spoken to it, and we'll see what happens.
Okay, I, I was considering that, the report, so what I'll do now is bring that back to council if we have any motions.
Have a motion to establish a subcommittee to review and prioritize capital improvement programs for the city councils to bring back to the consider, to the city council to consider. So, this will not be the priorities of two people, this will simply be recommendations made to the city council, and the city council will ultimately approve or not approve the recommendations.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and as always, this may be redundant, but as the maker of the motion, you can speak to it, I know you've already spoken to it, but I have to offer you the, the opportunity if you'd like to say it.
Thank you, I've spoken to it.
Okay, any further discussion? Now, Councilmember Y.
So, I, you know, I'm in favor of this, the comments made about, do we need it or not? So, where, where I think it adds value, we look at a, a list presented by staff, and we talk through it, and we prioritize and think about, you know, when to do them. But what we don't often consider are things that simply aren't on the list, things that we might have considered had they shown up on the list. So, getting another set of, of eyes looking at the list and talking through as we're trying to look at it around the city and, and creating additions to the list that we might not have thought of without that additional subcommittee's input, and then we can accept or reject any of those ideas or prioritize them, but a lot of times, things just don't, you know, I have, I have a dozen things I'd love to add to the list that I think are just valuable to the city, that aren't on any of our lists now. Whether or not they should be on the list and we would approve them, I think they're worth, you know, bringing up, thinking about, and deciding, and I'm sure that most of the rest of the people here, when they got into it, would find several things that they think we could invest in that, you know, basically would improve our overall city as an asset, and I think that is, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and I, I'm going to apologize to Ms. Lewis for this, because when I first read this, I thought this was actually the resolution, and my, the presumption I was thinking, and I kind of was correcting myself and talking out loud on this, but the presumption I was thinking was, you know, resolution outlasts all of us on the council, you know, presumably, if it's a good resolution, it's going to move forward, and, and that comment in there, I, I just found that, well, you may not even be on the council in, well, you won't be on the council in eight years, and this could still be in place, so how does that work? So, that, I apologize for that, that was my, what I thought, what is this? So, you know, it, it goes back to, you know, this is such a big issue for the city when we start talking about our CIP budgets and the amount of money we spend, and, you know, I guess we could set it up that you get one year on it, or however you want to do it, or we could rotate it, and I truly believe that, you know, it, it should be a rotating committee, and, you know, you get a year on it, you move off of it, you stagger it somehow, and that way, there, there's no concern that there's a political agenda behind it, everybody gets their, their say if we're going to do this. You know, I, I could see it being set up that way, I'm not exactly sure how to do that right now, I'm just, again, thinking out loud on this, we, you know, I was out of town, and I didn't get this until late, but, but again, I, I still sit here and, you know, I listen to what Mr. Wyatt was saying, that, you know, there might be twelve more things that he wants on this, but if he's not on the subcommittee, it, it doesn't matter what his twelve things are, because he can't talk to the subcommittee directly without violating the Brown Act. He's got to bring those here, and it's the same thing with each one of us. We can bring these issues up at any meeting, we have council comments at every single meeting, and if there's something out there that you think you want, you can, in council comments, say, you know what, I'd like to investigate this, send staff off, and, and put it back on a future agenda, and we can all talk about it if it's, if it's a priority for the council. You know, I, I just, I still am not seeing the value in having an additional subcommittee, I just haven't been convinced of that yet, when there's only five of us anyway. And, like I said, we can do this at any time. I look at the CIP program all the time to see what's going on. I want to know where our dollars are going, and sometimes I see things, I'm like, is that something we really need to do? And I talk to staff about that. You know, it doesn't always make it here, because they could sometimes give me reasons on, yes, this is exactly why we're doing it, this is why we prioritize it, and, again, they can convince me it's the right thing to do, instead of, you know, having a, maybe a pet project out there that we could push, you know, I don't know the right term for it, a more critical issue that needs to be done in the city, because we have a pet project, so we're going to shift funds to do it. You know, I think all of those discussions should happen right here between the five of us. I'm not sure that breaking it down with two people is really the right thing to do, but again, I'm still on the fence on this. I, you know, I'm not adamantly opposed to it, I just haven't really seen the value in it yet, and when you start talking about it aligns with the strategic plan, yeah, there's value there, I guess. You know, we set that up here, but if you think about it, when the staff is setting up the, the CIP projects, they should be looking at the strategic plan and saying, these are the goals of this council. And so, why do we have to jump back in and micromanage them again? I mean, we've already given them their direction, I, I just don't see, again, I, I'm repeating myself, I just don't see the value in it. I think we give them direction, they bring it back, if we have an issue with it, we can discuss it between the five of us, so, that's what I have so far, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I've got a few comments, I just, you know, when I, when I see something like this, where I start from is, you know, if there's an issue that needs to be addressed, my, my first thought... my first thought is not to, you know, create a new subcommittee and have more meetings and have more government, that doesn't usually lead to the solution to the issue in my experience. So, I was starting from that, that place, but what I wanted to do was, you know, here, I'm really trying to get to yes and see if there's value in doing this despite that, so I wanted to, I wanted to hear what the various positions were, and I appreciate the comments of Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Wyatt for why it might have value, but what I wanna do is, I mean, I'm still not there yet, I need to ask a few questions to see if I can get there, or if I'm misinterpreting something, because, I guess I'll make a statement, and then I'll ask the staff whether I'm misinterpreting this. The way I see this is, it's a subcommittee of two council members, and I understand it was suggested that it be Councilmember Lewis, but I'm under, I'm going to make the assumption it could be any, any two council members, and, and what they are going to do is review CIP projects, prioritize them, the two of them, come back, make a, make a recommendation, I guess I'll just read from the, the subcommittee will meet and make its recommendations on CIP project priorities, along with the CIP schedule and budget, amounts spent, and anticipated spending through completion of each CIP project. Afterwards, a subcommittee will meet with staff to go over recommendations and make any changes as a result, once finalized, a subcommittee will issue its recommendations to council for approval. So, I guess my, my real question is, I'm thinking, you know, under, I'll say, under the Brown Act, two members, the reason we only have two members on this is to not violate the Brown, create another Brown Act committee, correct? Okay, so, if, if two members, can two members, can two people already do this? I mean, this is kind of a layered question, but if we didn't create a subcommittee, couldn't this be taking place already?
Yes.
So, okay, so if two council members, you know, without creating a formal subcommittee, two councilors could get together and go and work with, do everything that this is trying to accomplish, so that was kind of the first layer of my question, I think you've answered, but the, a concern I sort of had was, you know, we're gonna decide who's on this subcommittee, and I'll pick, there's two more things I wanna say, the, you know, we're only five members, and ultimately, we get together every couple of weeks to talk about these things, and we did just adopt a schedule that had budget workshops, and we laid out, you know, a lot of times where we can meet, we can discuss various issues, we could agendize this and talk about them, and ultimately, if the subcommittee is just making a recommendation to us, I'm viewing that as the two council members who could get together anyway, and come to this conclusion, and make those arguments when we come here to discuss those issues, all five of us, that's what's going to happen anyway, and really, I guess the concern I have is, if we followed the, the recommendation that it be Councilmember Lewis and one other council member, I don't know, I mean, I guess, I'd like to think that we would all be able to agree on priorities, but I won't single out any, any individual members of the council, but I feel like if, if it weren't the right two members that already agreed on their priorities, there would be a, you know, a logjam anyway, and the committee wouldn't really produce anything of any value, they would just come back with their various views of what the priorities are anyway. So, I'm just, you know, I'm speaking out loud, and it's sort of, you know, this is how I'm thinking about it, and I'm gonna open it up to another round of discussion if, if people want to address, you know, what I'm, what I've said, but I just, at this point, I, I guess to sum it up, yeah, I don't see the need in that we could already be doing this, or perhaps already are, so with that, I'll open it up to another round. Councilmember Thompson?
I have nothing further.
Okay, Councilmember Wyatt?
I have a couple of comments, in response to your input. First of all, my, my neighbor over here, Mrs. Councilmember Tomlinson, and I are on a two-person subcommittee to work on short-term rentals, that was set up by this council a few weeks ago, and, so we could work through issues and sort of, you know, take that opportunity to, you know, munch stuff together and work with staff and others to come up with, you know, how we might propose something back, and, you know, there's a fair amount of digging and work to be done and bringing it back, so we do that work offline and bring it back to the council. I thought it was a good idea at the time, and I still think it's a good idea, we're surfing out a lot of information, and I think we're, you know, I'd like to move quicker, but I always like to move quicker, but we're making progress on it. So, I, first of all, so I don't see it as an odd thing to do, I guess, based on that. Secondly, you know, I come out of, you know, startup engineering background, where we were working on innovation constantly, and brainstorming was the most powerful tool we used when we'd get together and just get ideas from different people, and bring them up and discuss them, and sometimes the initial reaction was, that's the craziest idea I've ever heard, but if you turn it seven degrees and fit it in here, you know, it fits really nice with this overpiece, and, you know, over a few meetings, I mean, we've, well, I have a long patent portfolio to show for it, so I guess it worked in times, right? So, getting a subcommittee to bad ideas around, and they will be different ideas, and they won't agree, and they will discuss them, and as they discuss them, they will find ways that, you know, one idea and one approach that one person took is so different than the other person took, they would have never thought of it, but as it comes together, it will start to sort of get these ideas about what might be possible, right? We really backed the idea of innovation in our strategic plan, and that sort of takes these ideas of bubbling stuff up offline, then when we take those ideas and we munch them together with the staff recommendations, which are more operational sourced, and look at how those might fit, I think we just gained something, so I think it's a, it's a way to allow us to, to brainstorm, innovate, source ideas, shoot them down, source different ideas, you know, and fit them in, that we don't have. It's one of my most frustrating parts of being on the council, is I just can't go brainstorm with a bunch of people without calling a public meeting and noticing what I'm gonna brainstorm on, and I don't even know most of the time, so, so I think that this idea opens an opportunity that we should, we should take advantage of, and Councilmember Lewis has said she's willing to put in the time, so I would, in fact, appreciate and thank her for that willingness, because, you know, it does take time and thought to do these, so I, I'm in, I'm in support of putting something together that allows us to surface ideas and brainstorm, and challenge things that other come to, and decide how all that fits together, so that we, we have a better city as a result.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Wyatt, I really appreciate the support. However, the response I've gotten does not surprise me in the least, it has been what I have seen for a year and a half, and it's not just me, other people from the public have come forward now and have spoken to what is taking place on this council. When there was a short-term rental subcommittee proposed, I believe by Mr. Miller, and two of the other council members were putting, were put on that, I heard no, no concerns about, oh my goodness, this is just two people, and this is their idea, and, you know, their agenda, and why don't the two of us, you know, why don't two members just get together and talk about it? And when I heard, oh, a parking subcommittee, you know, again, two of the council members were put on, I asked to be put on, this was a big issue for me, no, 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 not, can't do that, two members now sit on that parking committee. There was no discussion about, well, why don't just two people go out there and talk about it, why do we need a whole subcommittee, why do we need more government, government's not the answer, none of these concerns were voiced by any of the people that voiced concerns. When I brought the F, the Financial Review Subcommittee to this council, the first day it was approved five-zero, the very next meeting, it was walked back, oh, maybe they don't need to meet every month, maybe they should only meet once a quarter, and they should, you know, not be able to look at every document, and ultimately, the three men on this council killed it, it's gone. Let's see, what else? Oh, when I wanted to speak to the chief last year, Chief Chilton, and go out and talk to people about neighborhood watch, that motion lost three-two. When I wanted to go out with Mr. Kilibrew last year, and it was his idea to go on a speaking committee with me, when I asked him, can we go out and talk to people, that lost three-two. There was concern, political agenda, political agenda, whenever I wanna talk about something, there's a concern about political agenda, but otherwise, there is no concern about political agenda, or why aren't people just getting together and talking? So, you know, this is not a surprise, when, when Mr. Denny and I spoke about it, I, I said, this is exactly what would happen, so, does not surprise me, but I will keep trying.
Okay, are there any other, any other comments? All right.
Ready to vote.
With that all...
I would like to comment, I thought John was gonna comment.
Oh, did you wanna con, sorry, Councilmember Thompson.
Look, can we stop the bickering, I guess? You know, you don't, not sure, you're not sure how the...
No cross-talk.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Thompson has the floor, if you'd like to talk, okay.
I'm good.
All right, Councilman Wyatt, did you have anything else you'd like to say before we vote?
Well, I, I do, I sort of, you know, appreciate Councilmember Lewis's statement, I am, I'm never opposed to, you know, having a little controversy if it raises ideas and causes us to think about things we don't think out before, I think is a valuable asset, and I think, you know, Councilmember Lewis can create a fair amount of controversy, and it's been good for the city, and it's good for the council to think about it, and I actually think she's a bright light, and I appreciate it.
Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, gonna correct a couple of things that were just set up here. The parking task, it's a task force, not a subcommittee, by the way, there's only one councilperson on that, I did not create it, I did recommend the short-term rental subcommittee, and, you know, appointed other, recommended other people for it, I didn't want, I didn't need to be on that one, that's a little bit different, I mean, that's going out, trying to study what other communities are doing, how does it work, how does the coastal commission feel about it, how can we actually write an ordinance that will, this community can agree on? That, those are long conversations, you need that, these are conversations about projects that are going on in the city that we see every day, and, and it should just come back here for the discussion, so, you know, just the fact that I'm not exactly sure what Ms. Lewis was trying to insinuate here, and maybe she's willing to voice it out loud, I'm not sure what she was trying to say, I mean, every one of those things she said, we said it here tonight, you can already do this on your own, it's a two-person committee, if you wanna go meet with one other council member and staff, you can go do it anytime you want, and I think you can do it with multiple members of this council, because we're not making any decisions, we're talking about where the city is going, we're not acting on anything, and I might be wrong about that, Mr. Munoz, but I...
You know, a council member can only meet with one other council member on a substantive issue, doesn't matter if you're making decisions or not.
Okay, then I was wrong, sorry.
You were wrong.
Okay, thanks. So, you know, when you can do it without making the government bigger and saying you're mandating it, I always think that's a better thing for the community, I just think it's bad when government starts to grow and, and create all these different subcommittees, and it just starts to become insidious within the community, and it just, it doesn't feel right, so, if you wanna do it, go do it, I mean, that's all we're saying, is, you know, why do we need a subcommittee to do what any two of us can do anyway, and it's very different than creating an ordinance, where we're trying to prioritize capital improvement programs that, that all of us talk about and can talk about twice a month, so if you wanna talk about it, you know, council comments, you know, agendize it for the next meeting, we can always do that, so, it's just, I don't see it yet.
Okay, I, I think that everybody's had their say on this issue, so with that, do you think that you're going to convince someone to change their vote at this point?
Uh, maybe.
Mr. Wyatt?
Maybe, maybe.
Okay, I'll recognize you then.
I, I want to, I want to respond as to why any two of us just can't do it. As I said before, best results will come with two people who are sort of at the opposite ends of the teeter-totter, you know, surfacing and working out ideas and wrangling about them, and, you know, yelling at each other a bit as they, in terms of a crazy idea or a good idea, and those two people don't naturally necessarily always decide to work together, so, setting up a committee, putting together people who will come at the world from absent views, it was, you know, as an engineer, I always appreciated working with the marketing people who took a totally different view of the world than I did, and I learned so much from them, and I hope they learn from me, I think, you know, so, anyway, so, ultimately, the advantage that we would gain is we would get, put two totally incompatible people together to try to come up with a compatible list, so, that's my reason why I would do it.
Okay, thank you, with that, I'll call for the votes. All right, that passes three to two. Now, what we'll need to do is, since the recommended action was to appoint Councilmember Lewis and one other council member, I think we should take that up, and I guess I'll bring that back to the council, if anyone wants to volunteer.
Well, I would gladly volunteer, but I actually don't think I'm the right person to add, I mean, I have lots of ideas, I think that getting, you know, one of the, you know, one of the council members that tends to, you know, rub the wrong way against Councilmember Lewis from time to time will be more valuable as we work through, and so, you know, create that irritation, because the irritation will cause the juices to flow more, and the ideas will be better, so, I would, I would like it to be some, even though I, I would enjoy it, I think that there's a better fit for this committee than I am.
Okay, anyone else wanna raise their hand? This committee is not, subcommittee's not gonna function unless we have a second member.
Well, then I will, I will nominate Councilmember Miller to be the second member of that committee.
That's fine.
Oh, I'll leave it up to Councilmember Miller, Mayor Proton Miller, excuse me.
Okay.
Okay, we have a subcommittee formed. Very well, we, anything else to address on that item? I don't believe we do.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, in the budget calendar you adopted, when you adopted the operating budget policy, we have a meeting called out, second meeting in October, as a CIP and facilities project update, current and proposed, so, we'll get the subcommittee together probably later this summer, that'll give Matt and his staff a little time to get their work done in terms of refining the capital projects for the upcoming fiscal year, and then have that presentation made, and then perhaps the subcommittee can report to the council at that second meeting in October in terms of their progress.
Okay. Thank you, moving on, we're now to the new business portion of the agenda, item fourteen, calling for a general municipal election on November sixth, twenty-eighteen, to fill three city council seats in districts one, two, and three, do we have a staff report, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Ms. Ward has a staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, on even years, I bring forward an agenda report to present the procedures... report to present the procedures for another general municipal election, which this year will be on November 6th, for three council seats for Districts 1, 2, and 3, which is a first for us to be in district elections. And the city council must adopt three resolutions. The first one is to call the election. Second one is to consolidate the election with our registrar's office. And the third one is to adopt the regulations for candidate statements. Those are optional, but it's still, you have to call those regulations. So, that's basically it. If you have any other questions, I'm available to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, my question for you is, do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very well. We will bring it back to the council, and I will move the recommended action. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
No, sir.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes, I have discussion. Thank you. Okay, I have quite a bit to say about districting and what has happened to bring this about in this city. So, here is a time, a timeline for the Safe Harbor and Dana Point's timeline. And I, this timeline was done courtesy of DanaPointer.com, and you can find it on DanaPointer.com. So, here's the situation. It seems that Dana Point did not have to vote by district in 2018. We could have still been voting at-large and still been within the Safe Harbor. And this timeline is going to tell the story, a story that I was not told, and I don't, I don't know who else was. I know Mr. Wyatt was also surprised when he learned about this information. I can't speak to the others. I've not spoken to them. So, the Safe Harbor says, once we received the letter, we have 45 days to pass a resolution of our intent to go to districts. Then, an additional 90 days to actually have the public hearings and pass an ordinance and come up with the maps. 30 days later, that ordinance takes effect. So, we have a total of 165 days under the Safe Harbor from the date we received the letter to the date that ordinance is effective. The red line on there is the drop dead date for the Orange County Registrar to receive the ordinance, because if they don't receive it by that date, it doesn't go on the 2018 election. So, under the Safe Harbor, we had 165 days. We would have missed the 2018 cutoff, and we would not have been by district in 2018. But we still would have been within the Safe Harbor. We would have had two years to do surveys, to go to the public, to put things on the ballot, like, do we want four and an at-large mayor? Do we want five? But we didn't, we didn't get that. So, here's the Dana Point timeline. We got the letter, well, the letter was dated the second, so I used that date. But I was told on the 7th that we just received the letter. But from the second, 19 days later, the resolution was passed. What was not told when we passed the resolution, and it is not in any staff report, was that the resolution date triggers the 90 days, not the 45. It's not 45 plus 90. If we pass that resolution on 19 days, that starts the 90 days. Well, I didn't know that when I voted to do the resolution. So, let me read you what the staff report says. It says, if within 45 days, the city adopts a resolution declaring the council's intent to transition from at-large to district-based elections, the potential plaintiff is prohibited from filing a CVRA action for an additional 90 days. There's nothing in there that says the resolution triggers anything. It just pass it within 45 days. There is no downside, no, no caveat, nothing. So, unfortunately, I didn't learn all this till much too late. But when I was doing some, some later investigations, so that when we had our public hearings, I would know what I was talking about and would be talking to people and not sounding ignorant, I found something called the California Voting Rights Act, what to do when your agency gets a letter. It was written by Thomas Rice, an attorney at Best, Best &amp; Krieger, and Doug Johnson. Now, Doug Johnson is the demographer this city hired, and actually, this month, just paid $35,000 to. This item was written November 2nd, 2017. It says, note, do not assume you have 135 days. Adopt as close to the 45th day as possible. I was not told that. Had we done that, had we waited 45 days, then 90, then 30, we all, every one of us would have been voting in 2018. And now, 40% of the voters of Dana Point have to sit out this election. They get no say as to the majority on this council, because three seats are up. That is the majority, and we've seen the power of three seats. And now, 40% of the people are going to sit out this election, and that did not need to happen. I think it would have behooved us to wait till 2020, taken our time, really see what the residents wanted to do about the districts, the five districts, the four districts and a mayor. Do we like the five districts map? Give us a chance to talk to people. And people kept coming to the workshop, saying, why are we rushing? Why are we rushing? And they were never given an answer. The survey, I asked for, we asked for a survey. Council approved a survey on four versus five. We don't have that yet. Schenkman, he's the attorney, the CVRA guy, who writes all these people, who's written up in the LA Times. We have, our letter did not come from Mr. Schenkman. Our letter came from Russell Mirick, an attorney from La Jolla, who's never been in the CVRA arena before. As I, as far as I know, he hasn't been in it since. And in fact, we just received his bill, most of which is researching the CBRA and all the cases on the CBRA, because he did write us one letter and now wants $35,000 from us. Two years would have also given us a chance to see what happens in this arena. Mission Viejo has said, no, we're not going to districts, because we, Mission Viejo, have a minority population that will not benefit from districting. They are too few in number and too scattered about the community. So, there are other things that can be done. And they have a lawsuit now, and we would have had a chance to see what happened with their lawsuit, because much like Mission Viejo, we are in the same position here in Dana Point. We have 11% of our voting population is minority. We do not have any minority-majority district. And we have all agreed, the council, the attorney, the city manager, that districting does not benefit the minority population. As well, Santa Monica, they are fighting it. They are saying basically the same thing, among other things. Their case is going to trial in July, but now we don't have the chance to see what's happened with that. So, two years would have really given us a large advantage. So, I think this is something that people need to understand, that they are being disenfranchised, and they did not have to be. And I feel very strongly about this. And I feel that it did not need to happen. It should never have happened. And I encourage everybody to go to DanaPointer.com, look at the timeline, read the article, and see what happened. And much like I did not vote for the district, I cannot support this motion, and I cannot support the request to go to general municipal election on this.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got the same. Can you put the slide back up? I guess I'm not watching the right thing here. Okay, thank you. I've got the same staff report right here. And on page nine of Exhibit 1, it clearly states, and then on 220, that's the date of this staff report, the man letter was sent on 22, must adopt the resolution within 45 days, that's 319. If adopted, city gets additional 90 days of legal immunity, that's 521. Now, this top timeline is correct. This is exactly how it could have happened. The bottom line is also correct. That's how it did happen. However, my question is, did it matter to the registrar that it was the, that we'd already enacted the ordinance, it just didn't go into effect for 30 days? But because that's before the election, it's still in effect before the election, correct?
The, there is no legal effect whatsoever to the registrar's timeline. The exhibit you have in front of you, or the doc, or whatever you want to call this thing, is absolutely factually and legally inaccurate. It is complete nonsense. It is not from a reputable news source. This is the epitome of what we have come to know as fake news. There is a political website that is pretending to be a legitimate news source. It is not. It is purely political. It's very much like what the chief of police was talking about a few minutes ago. It is a disservice to the community when people go on what is effectively social media and say things that are absolutely unequivocally false. Everything that Councilmember Lewis just said was false and inaccurate. The, there is no question, it is an objective fact, that we had to apply the district election in 2018 in order to take advantage of the Safe Harbor, period. Issues on this question arose at the first community forum that we had. As a result, we provided a staff report to you, a supplemental staff report on April 16th, that unequivocally stated that the districting would have to be effective in 2018 in order for the city to take advantage of the Safe Harbor provision. Whether you take advantage of that or not is a policy choice up to you. This council voted to take advantage of it. If you want to take advantage of it, it had to apply in 2018. Everybody was told exactly what the timelines were and what the ramifications were. There is a closed session memo that was provided to each of you that expressly outlines in it what the rules are and how these timelines apply. On February 20th, the staff report that you just referred to had in it exactly what the timelines are. It was very clear that you had until March, I can't remember the date, March 19th was the 45th day, that you had until which you could adopt the resolution of intention. Staff was directed to bring it forward, and staff did bring it forward when we did. But the staff report made it very clear that you had no obligation to adopt the timeline that night, that you had no obligation to adopt the timeline that was presented. It was a proposed timeline. It was an apolitical timeline. The timeline literally was nothing more than each of the next meetings. We would deal with the issues. There was no effort to politicize this when that timeline was proposed. And when the timeline was proposed to this council, it was expressly in writing told that you were not obligated to adopt that timeline. You had any timeline you wanted to adopt. In my comments, I went back and I watched the video after I saw this nonsense on social media, to make sure that I was clear, both in my written staff report, because I was being accused of malpractice, and I'm a little upset about it, frankly. I made sure in my written work product, it was very clear that this council was expressly advised of how the law worked and what your options were. And in my oral comments in the presentation I gave that night, I expressly made those comments. The idea that this council didn't know is nonsense. The registrar cared about one thing. The registrar made it clear to us that there was a date upon which he would like to have the map, not the effective ordinance. There is no law that says that the registrar must have an ordinance that has taken effect by the date of this nonsense dotted line on this diagram. The registrar says, I would like to have your map on, whatever the date was, July 3rd, 4th, 5th, something like that. Staff called after this nonsense appeared and verified with the registrar that that in fact is the case. The registrar didn't care. Had we decided to play politics and try to use every minute of the first 45 days and then the subsequent 90 days, and by the way, this council never expressed any desire to do that, had this council had some desire to do that, I would have been more than happy to help you take advantage of those things. But had we taken advantage of every possible minute, the 90th day following the last possible 45th day would have been June 17th. That was the date upon which the ordinance was adopted. That is the key date under the CVRA. And remember, the CVRA is the law. The registrar's date that he picks out of a hat, out of thin air, because it's convenient for him, is not the law. All the registrar cared about was after June 17th, if we provided him with a copy of our maps, he's good to go, because that gives him the time he needs to prepare the stuff he needs for the upcoming election. And by the way, if you think for a second that faced with the prospect that we had racially polarized voting, that a judge would have been persuaded that, ooh, we could get away with a couple of extra days by waiting until the June 17th, and then, aha, our ordinance isn't effective till July, whatever, 6th, 7th, 8th, after this date, July 17th, and we could avoid having to have a law apply until 2020, you are kidding yourself. There is no way a judge would allow for that. The registrar's timelines are set up because the registrar knows there are often, in fact, in every election, election contests. This city was embroiled in one a couple of years ago. Mr. Hill continues to have a bone of contention with me personally, because at this council's direction, we went to court when he brought, or was the subject, rather, of an election challenge. It was related to Measure H and the false and misleading statements the court found that he made. Now, what happened in that case is instructive of what's going on here. The registrar has deadlines by which ballot statements are required to be turned in. The registrar has deadlines by which the statement that Mr. Hill was found to have made false and misleading statements in had to be turned in. But guess what? The court routinely, and in virtually every election, because there's an election challenge in virtually every election, alters those dates by saying, okay, I find that there's false and misleading statements in this document. It has to be changed. So, the final document gets published after the registrar's self-imposed deadline. The CVRA is the law. Neil Kelly's determination that he feels like it'd be convenient for him to have this information by July 5th is not the law. And more importantly, all Neil Kelly cared about was having the maps. Now, there is no question that had we adopted the ordinance on July, June, rather, 17th, it would have been effective 30 days later, presumably that's July 17th, July 18th, maybe, depending on the days of the month. The effective date would have been after the date that Mr. Kelly requested the documents, the maps. All he needed was the maps, though. It's all he cared about. What are the implications if the ordinance did not become effective? Begs the question, right? Well, one of two things would have happened. It would have been effective, as turned out to be the case here, or there would have been a referendum effort. If there was a referendum effort, the city would have been presented with signatures. The city council. The city council's only choices, if presented with signatures, are number one, to basically repeal the ordinance, or number two, to put it out to a vote. Under either scenario, the city would not have availed itself of the safe harbor provisions any longer. So the only way for the city to have availed itself of the safe harbor provisions was to go forward with districting effective in 2018. You could have adopted a districting ordinance effective in 2020, or in 2030, or in 2099. But you wouldn't have had the benefit of the safe harbor. The idea that you could have played some game and saying, oh, well, wait a second. If we stretch it out to the last minute, and then it won't have to be effective for two more years, is ludicrous. If a court thinks you have racially polarized voting, this upcoming election would have been invalidated if somebody brought an injunction. Period. You don't get to say, well, we adopted it for 2020. A court's going to say, well, wait a second. You adopted an ordinance that if it had been adopted on June seventeenth and effective on July seventeenth, would have been effective four months before the election? There's not a judge on the planet that is going to allow you to avoid applying your districting elections for two more years because, well, you know, even though it was adopted four months in advance, it was four days after the date that Neil Kelly decided was convenient for him. The CVRA is the law. Mr. Kelly's whim is not the law.
Okay.
Well, I have a call.
I've got a couple more things I'd like to say if I can still have the floor.
Mayor Portman Miller has the floor and is yielding for a question, so I will defer.
Continue to yield. I mean, that's more information I thought I was going to get, but yeah, okay.
Continue, he's yielding the floor for the question.
You know, there's a couple of comments I'd like to respond to. The idea that people were never given answers to why are we rushing is not a true statement. It's a statement we heard over and over and over again from members of the public saying, oh, why are we rushing? And the answer was given to them over and over and over again. We were not rushing. We followed the law. The state legislature came up with a law. That law was you have ninety days. And within that ninety days, you are to have five public, actually, it's total seven public hearings really, that end up happening. In our case, we added two more. So, yes, it's a short timeline. That's unfortunate. I didn't make it up. Staff didn't make it up. The three guys on the council didn't make it up. The state legislature made it up. And we were given a choice to follow the law or not follow the law. And this council chose to take advantage of the ninety-day safe harbor period. The only way you can do that is to follow the ninety-day rules. If it feels rushed, talk to the state legislature. Your other option, a policy choice, would have been to not take advantage of it. But the decision was made to take advantage of it. It wasn't rushed, we followed the timelines. You know, Mr. Shankman, from the bills we received in the last week, appears as though he may have been involved, actually. So to say that this lawyer that nobody's ever heard of is solely responsible for this, I mean, I don't know one way or another, but I saw the same bills that you've seen, and he's consulting with Mr. Shankman. We know that Mr. Grimes was involved in Mission Viejo. We know that Mr. Shankman's got more cases on this stuff out there than he probably handle on his own. It appears to me a reasonable conclusion, and it's just an assumption, I will admit I could be a hundred percent wrong on this, is that Mr. Shankman is coordinating with other people. People were not disenfranchised. The state of California legislature has passed a law, and it has passed challenges in front of the courts, saying that districting is legal. You might not get to vote in each election, but you get to vote in every other election. And the state has determined that that's not disenfranchised, it's perfectly legal. Now, you may not like it, and that's okay. And nobody likes this. Every client that our firm has had to deal with on this is as upset about it as you and this community has been. It sucks. And it has this tinge to it of we're somehow doing something inappropriate, that we're a bunch of racist bigots because of the language that gets used in the law. It is unfortunate. It is very unfortunate that that's the way the law was written. But it doesn't matter if the city was being intentionally, was intentionally taking actions to disenfranchise voters of a protected class or not. The law was written in a way to ensure that we had no choice other than to have to go to district elections. And as I showed on the very first night that we had this unfortunate discussion, there's newspaper articles talking about the fact that it's an outrage. It's an absolute outrage that my colleagues, other lawyers, had the audacity to draft a law and to get their colleagues in the state legislature to draft a law that instead of just saying, every city shall go to district elections, it wrote a law that effectively says that, but instead, with the way it's written, says, if a lawyer sends you a demand letter, now you have to do it or you're going to be subject to a lawsuit that you cannot win. Oh, and for the goodwill that you get out of pissing off your community and doing something they don't want to do, you get the right to write that lawyer a thirty thousand dollar check. This law is terrible. There's a lot of terrible laws out there. This is one of them. It is discouraging to me as somebody who's worked for this community very hard for the last fifteen years and gotten very good results over and over and over again for this community. I care a lot for this community. It is really discouraging to me to see that people who, until recently, I frankly thought I had a friendly relationship with, will draft this kind of garbage and put it out on a website that claims to be a news website that is nothing more than a political blog, social media. This is the epitome of fake news. That's all my comments.
I'm done.
Okay, you're done. I think all my questions were answered. I will give it another round if anyone else has anything. Nothing else? All right, I'll call for the vote.
No, no, I was waiting till I was called.
You had nothing?
Okay, so this has nothing to do with Mr. Hill. Nothing whatsoever. So I don't know where that came from, but this has nothing to do with that. And, I mean, we didn't follow the timeline. We had forty-five plus ninety. And I did talk after, after I got this information, I talked to the registrar. They told me July fifth was their drop dead date, and they had to have an effective map. So, this is the information that I received from the registrar, talking to them personally. And if you have an ordinance and a map, you can't give it to the registrar if it's not effective.
Of course you can. We did it.
Well, of course you did it, but how do they put something on a ballot when they don't know if it's actually going to be upheld?
It happens every time somebody gives a ballot statement. It happened when Mr. Hill gave his ballot statement that ended up not being upheld. The registrar comes up with deadlines that are convenient for the registrar knowing there is a likelihood that there will be further challenges down the road, and he has to gauge for that. Now, there is a deadline out there. The closer you get to November sixth, the more a judge is going to listen and say, yeah, no, it's just too late now to make changes. And that's one of the arguments that we hear every single time we have these ballot challenges, these election challenge lawsuits. And what ends up happening is because of those deadlines, when a lawsuit gets filed, we parade into the judge and we say, here are the deadlines that we have to meet in order for the final printing of all ballot material to go out, which is, I'm going off of vague memory, it's late October if I'm not mistaken, might be early October. So, when we go parading into the judge, the first thing we do is we go in on what's called an ex-party application to get a hearing to talk about what our time schedule is going to be, because we know there is a date out there. That date is not in July. There is no way, no how, anyone is going to allow a July seventeenth date to have been enough for this ordinance to not have applied in 2018, especially when Mr. Kelly only cared about getting the maps. We gave him the maps, we could have given him the maps on June seventeenth had we gone to the last deadline. It is, I mean, this is a hypothetical fiction that was put together based on assumptions, false information, and a lack of understanding of the law. Period.
Well, I will say that this has, like I said, nothing to do with Mr. Hill, and...
Other than Mrs. Hill is the co-author of this website.
It's not the co-author, this has nothing to do with the Hills. And the information came from information that I had on the forty-five days, the ninety days, the thirty days, and the nineteen eighty-six and thirty days.
Well, you know.
I will take total responsibility for that.
People make mistakes.
These are my, mine based on the law and mine based on what we did. And my conversations with the registrar. Had nothing to, I'm not done yet. Nothing to do with Mr. Hill, and it's not that the Dana Pointer is a, a social media site. So, I took information from the law and from what we did and put a timeline together. So, if, if what you're saying is that the registrar's deadline has nothing to do with it, then I apologize. I take responsibility for that. That was ran counter to specifically what I was told.
Okay, with that, I think everyone's had their say, we're going to call for the vote. Motion passes four to one. Moving on, item fifteen. Introduction of an Ordinance of the City of Dana Point Amending Title Eight Building and Construction of the Municipal Code to Add One, Section eight point two-two point zero-one-nine Expedited Permitting Processing for Residential Rooftop Solar Photovoltaic Installations and Two, Chapter eight point three-three Expedited Electric Vehicle Charging Station Permitting. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Ms. Luna Reynosa has a staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I will keep this brief, but ask me if you have more questions. And Jack Holden, our building official, is here to answer any questions as well. The California legislature adopted two assembly bills to promote environmental policies for alternative energy. And they require cities to adopt an ordinance to outline a streamlining process and to limit the amount of fees that can be collected specifically for solar panels, roof-mounted solar panels, as well as electric vehicle charging stations. So, this evening is an introduction of an ordinance amending Title Eight, which is the building and construction title of the city's municipal code to follow the guidance, the mandate of the state legislature. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, I'll move the recommended action. Okay, is there any discussion on the item? No, no discussion. Call for the vote. Okay, the pass is five zero. Moving on to item sixteen. Professional services agreements for supplemental plan check, counter, inspection, and code enforcement services. Do we have a staff report, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and what will be her last staff report as the community development director for the city of Dana Point. Ms. Luna Reynosa has some words for you.
Thank you. As we've discussed in the past, the city has had extensive record-breaking activity at the permit counter. Our current staff is not sufficient in terms of providing resources for particularly plan check and inspection services. So we have a number of firms that provide those on a contract basis for the city. We're here this evening before you requesting that you approve contracts with identified firms for those services to help supplement city staff resources to conduct this work. And again, building official Jack Holden and I are available if you have any questions.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Very well, I'll make, I'll move the recommended action. All right, any discussion? Seeing all in favor, oh, you do, okay.
I have a question.
Councilmember Wyatt.
So, in the, you know, in the amount of fees that, you know, that, what it costs us to provide services and what we charge for them, there are set fees and then there are hourly, there are fees that are based on hourly rates that, you know, and some of that, as you described, these contracts look at an hourly rate and what these contracts collect against that rate. And interestingly, in a discussion with, with Mr. Killebrew, who were trying to work through the fee, the fee study that said that we were leaving, you know, two point three million dollars on the table by not increasing fees or something, and Mr. Killebrew said, well, that's, there's some more work to be done on that based on the way the hourly fees work and get reimbursed different than the set fees get reimbursed. So the number could be somewhat lower than that, maybe, you know, significantly lower. My question really in these contracts is, generally, are these resources that we're contracting for billed through at this percentage of the hourly rate as shown here, are these generally reimbursable resources?
So let me, there's two different types of services that we receive, and they're billed differently. So, plan checks, that's when somebody comes in with an application for a building permit. Before we can issue a building permit, we have to review the plans to ensure that they are compliant with the California Building Code. We have a set fee for that, and when we contract with these entities, they receive a percentage of that fee, I think it's outlined. So for plan check services, they get, is it eighty, eighty percent?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, seventy-five percent of the fee that we collect. We keep the remaining amount to cover overhead for managing that contract. So, and that is paid, the total fee is paid directly by the applicant, and so the city keeps fifteen percent of that, and the rest gets paid to the plan checker providing that service. On the inspection fees, so when we have contract inspectors out in the field, they are paid on an hourly rate based on the number of hours that they're, they're out in the field. So we compensate the two services in two different ways. The way we collect fees for inspection services is at the time of permit issuance. So we collect a plan check fee from the applicant separate from when we issue the building permit. At that time, we use the valuation tables currently to calculate the value of the project, and then we calculate a number based on those valuation tables for all remaining services that we provide after the building permit is issued. If it's a three-year construction project, then that fee that we collect at time of building permit issuance is going to have to last three years. And that's where, under our fee study, likely those fees are not lasting three years on some of those, you know, projects. So, that inspector, we pay directly. We collect the fee at permit issuance. And so we could have an inspector working on a project two years after we collected the permit issuance fee. We would have collected that in a certain fiscal year, and a couple fiscal years later, we are actually having the expense. So hopefully that makes sense.
And in our, in the fee study that we're working through, you know, changes and implementing, are those, those inspection fees and the way those work, are those also in part of that adjustment process?
Well, currently, under what you adopted this evening, we are continuing with the valuation tables for the majority of the projects that come into the building department. So anything that's really adding, a simple way to look at it, is anything that's adding square footage is going to be based on valuation. Or a major remodel, where you're looking at a kitchen and you can calculate a square footage in an area. Things like water heaters and individual permits that we might issue, those are not based on valuation, and those are straight sort of permit fees. The consultant has expressed a desire to move more toward a sort of kind of per-unit cost instead of using the valuation tables to move forward as a belief that it's a truer mechanism to actually look at true cost recovery. So, my understanding is that moving forward in this next phase is that there's potentially going to be a phasing out of the valuation table methodology going more toward... going to be a phasing out of the valuation table methodology, going more toward a different way to, so it's more on a permit being issued, sort of per-unit kind of approach, as opposed to this sort of valuation approach.
If I, if I could jump in really quick. The valuation table approach is still on the table, and Jack Holden, our new building official, will be working to look not only at how we've applied the valuation table approach, but also results of that in combination with the per-unit as, as Ursula. So what we bring back may be a hybrid model of changes. So we're not strictly looking at a per-unit basis. The valuation table basis is, is still a pretty widely-used approach, so. But ours, the way we apply it, it hasn't been updated, I don't think, since it was implemented.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to item 17. Resolution to amend the Arts and Culture Commission to include ex officio members. Do we have a staff report, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, it was suggested that the staff present a, an amendment to the existing resolution for the Arts and Culture Commission, following on the idea that came about through the development of the Homeless Task Force, where the council in developing the task force identified ex officio positions that can participate in the discussions, but the, but maybe folks that we work with, contract with, for example, Mercy House sat at the table during our Homeless Task Force. So I think the, the idea of the council was to create a similar classification of membership for the Arts and Culture Commission, so that we might be able to tap into the resources within town of folks that work in the worlds of arts and culture, so that they can assist us in our programming. So I know, I think Mayor Pro Tem Miller was the one that initiated this discussion, and so if he has anything else to add, certainly defer to him. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this came from, I've been working very closely with Arts and Culture regarding our concerts in the park and the art program. And through those conversations, you know, I started working really closely with Ms. Williams, and it became very clear to me very quickly, the impact of being on this commission was having on her personal business. And I thought, you know, we're going to lose a very good resource because of the restraints that are put on her by being a brown acted member of a commission. And I started talking with, you know, City Manager Denny, and saying, you know, "We've got some issues here. There are a lot of very talented people in this community, not just for Arts and Culture, but for other things, that may not be willing to get involved in, in the city and what we're trying to, to do, and where we're trying to go, because it could have a negative impact on their businesses and them personally." And so the discussion came down to, you know, we need to take a look at creating ex officio position on Arts and Culture specifically, because that's the one that, that I've been working very closely with, and, you know, to try to help Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams out, because she and I have been, and even Mr. Small, well, all of them really, I mean, I talked to all of them. I haven't talked to Ms. Rob yet, but I, I've worked with the other four about, you know, what is the vision for Dana Point, and how are we going to use Arts and Culture to, to, for economic development? How are we going to get people more interested in our community? And it seems like, you know, the direction we're going is, with, with all the music events that are in our city, is, is we should try to make Dana Point the place for music in Orange County. I mean, that could be one of our, one of our brands. And as we're going through that, you know, having a discussion with Kimberly, you know, it became painfully apparent to me that if we don't make some changes, we're going to lose that talent, and that's going to hinder what we're trying to accomplish. So, you know, I fully support creating this ex officio position. I'm actually going to make the motion tonight that we, we remove Ms. Williams from her, her appointed position and move her immediately into the ex officio, and then open up a search to replace her as, as a voting member of the Arts and Culture Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I just made it. You want me to make it again?
Make it again.
Okay. I'm going to make the motion that we establish the ex officio position tonight. We immediately move Ms. Williams into that position and open up a search to replace her in her, in the voting position on the, on the Arts and Culture Commission.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second. You've probably spoken to this already. You made the maker of the motion, if you want to speak to it more? Or you probably have nothing else to add? Councilmember Thompson.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Manios. Mr. Manios, can we, can we do such action tonight as to, to relieve a member and then put him in the ex officio position?
Yes, I actually, when I heard the motion, kind of quickly read the agenda. The agenda that was posted, the item, said a resolution of the City Council, the City of Dana Point, California, amending the membership of the Arts and Culture Commission. I think that's broad enough to include, you know, I mean, you're literally amending the membership by taking someone off of one spot and putting them in another spot, so I had that concern, but I think it's okay.
Okay, so as long as you're okay with it, I'm okay with the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Wyatt, anything?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I, I support this motion. I also spoke with Ms. Kimberly Williams, and she expressed that sentiment to me as well. And I, I agree with you. I think music is part of who we are, a large part of who we are. Also, when I went out, the Arts Festival, also struck me that, yes, we have, we have a part in the art world, too, in that, okay, maybe Laguna has the, the galleries and the high-priced artists, but we actually can interact with them and, and meet them and, you know, watch them work. And I found that to be very exciting as a part that makes Dana Point, you know, put its stamp on the arts and culture world. In fact, one of the artists we met, we bought a painting this weekend, and he's now giving some art instruction to my granddaughter. So, I mean, you just can't do that anywhere other than coming to Dana Point and walking on the streets and being able to actually reach, reach out and touch the art and touch the artist. So I, I fully support, support this motion.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Looks like this has a universal support. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to staff reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would indulge me, just a couple of quick things. First, our thank yous multiple to Dana Point Police Services. Did a ride along last Thursday night with Deputy Mers on his last day before he went out on a medical leave. Hopefully, we'll get him back sooner rather than later. But he demonstrated to me instinctively why he was our Deputy of the Year last year. He is really an asset and a truly outstanding deputy and a public servant for the people of Dana Point. We're very fortunate to have him. I also want to thank Lieutenant Sheehan. We had a very disturbing report about an act of violence that doesn't occur in this small community very often, and she worked day and night from Saturday afternoon, when I first talked to her, up to and including our closed session meeting today, through, through that entire time period. She was focused on addressing this issue, really out of concern for the community of Dana Point, and the, the concerns about the safety of this community, knowing full well that it is a safe community, and maybe even knowing that the city manager walks that route on a daily basis with his wife and dogs as well. So I really appreciate her efforts. I want to thank the Art Fest Committee. We had a really outstanding event since the last council meeting, and my wallet is certainly a little lighter as a result, and we, and I'm appreciative for it. And then hopefully, we hope to see everyone out at the Doheny Surf Festival this weekend at Doheny State Beach. It sounds like it'll be a great event, and we hope everyone stays safe. So thank you.
Mr. Denny, if I may just impose at this time, I was so surprised earlier that I was reluctant to thank the council for the recognition, so I wanted to do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. City Attorney?
Well, Ms. Luna Reynosa just sort of stole a little bit of my thunder, because I was going to personally tell her what a pleasure it's been working with her, and best of luck here at City of Huntington Beach. That's all I have this evening.
And again, I think we all, we all echo that. That brings us to the adjournment. The next regular meeting of the City Council will be July 17th, 2018, at 5:00 PM, here in the City Council Chamber, located 33202, Golden Lantern Suite 210, Dana Point, California. Ursula, since the last meeting, you want to adjourn? Bang your fist on the table.
A minute.
Adjourn. All right. All right.